Madam President, are you ready for me to call roll?
Yes.
Trish Bodie.
Here.
Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia. Anna Smith.
Here.
Shadé Fashekun. Paul Gautier.
Here.
Christine Maur.
Here.
Francesca Romans.
Here. All right, it is 6:15 and with a quorum of the board present, I call this regular meeting of Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. We will start with our next agenda item, our opening ceremony. We have our pledge of allegiance that'll be brought to us by Cadet Seaman Abigail Koppel. And before we stand, let me tell you all a bit about our cadet. Cadet Seaman Abigail Koppel of Lone Star Navy Company Navy Junior ROTC at the Vista Ridge High School is going to be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. Cadet Koppel is a ninth grader at Vista Ridge High School and an active member of Lone Star Company's junior varsity academic team. Cadet Koppel consistently personifies LISD's core beliefs. Most recently, by the way she helped to ensure a newly enrolled English language learner student felt welcome in a safe and caring environment. Cadet Koppel also continues to translate for the student in class. Cadet Koppel also earned the highest physical fitness score in the female category for ROTC's semi-annual fitness exam. She takes pride in serving the community as a volunteer at Veterans Memorial Park and local adopt highway cleanups. Her commitment to service, strong academic performance, sharp personal appearance, and exemplary leadership earned her the designation as a Cadet of the Month for December. Cadet Koppel's performance and dedication reflect most favorably on the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, her school, and the district. Well done, Cadet Koppel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
All right, board members, we will go on to one of our next favorite agenda items, recognition, spotlight on learning, Deer Creek Elementary School. Board members, we have students with us here this evening and Deer Creek Elementary School administrative staff, teachers, all coming to present.
All right, Madam President, Dr. Gearing, esteemed board members, thank you very much for having us. On behalf of Leander ISD, I really want to again express our appreciation as it is Board Appreciation Month. For the work that you do, it's challenging and it's necessary. And for a district like Leander where we really focus on kids, we really all appreciate your efforts. My name's Matt Hawkins. I'm proud to serve the students, the staff, and the community of Deer Creek Elementary. And we are here to share a little bit about our instructional framework. This is a district that really champions every single kid and knows that every kid deserves to learn and learn at the highest levels. So we are working on an instructional framework called Universal Design for Learning, but our kids are going to share what it is. And I'd like to introduce supports of Mr. Jason Hufford and Mrs. Victoria Crowe, second grade teacher and fourth grade teacher. Our kids are nervous. We told them that you're a great audience, and so don't let us down with it, but they're ready to go. So I turn it over to Mr. Hufford.
Good evening. My name is Mr. Jason Hufford, and we're not here as educators to tell you what we're doing, but instead we have our students here that are going to tell you why we're here. And as educators, we know that it's important for all students to have equitable access to the deep and meaningful instruction. And so as Deer Creek, the thing that we are collaborating and working together when we deliver our lessons is the UDL framework, which represents Universal Design for Learning. And so I would love to have both Olivia, who is in fourth grade, and Pearson, who is in second grade, to share a little bit more about how they access their learning.
UDL is Universal Design for Learning. As students, we have to learn our grade level standards. That means that as a fourth grade student, I have to learn certain things. UDL, because everyone is different, still says that these are the things that we have to learn, but we get to choose the way we learn it. Choice is important because I can choose things that will make me successful and others can choose different things that can make them successful. For example, I like to have a choice of seating when I'm reading. I'm a person who wiggles around a lot. Getting wobble chairs and donut seats helps me move around so I can focus a little bit more. A normal seat doesn't let me move around as much. And when I don't move around, it makes me have to like focus on not moving around, so I can't focus on what I'm doing. Some teachers might not want flexible seating because they think it distracts the kids from learning, but I know that for me, it helps me learn. And when I'm comfortable, I can focus and learn better.
Besides seating, it is important to have choices in how we learn. For example, if Mr. Hufford only gave me the choice of writing an essay by myself, I would probably not feel confident and not know what to do. That might make me feel so frustrated that I'd want to quit. But I want to be successful. So in UDL, we have choices of how we learn. For example, I can work with Mr. Hufford. I can use word banks and sentence stems. I can watch videos that will help me. And I can use ankle trots. If these choices will know that I will know that I could, how to get help, I will be, I will be more confident that I can get it done. I want to be successful. Having choices helps me and every student to do their best learning.
One main aspect of UDL is firm goals with flexible means. So we have Quinn from fourth grade and Sachi from second grade to share more about that.
Choices are also important so students can show what they have learned.
If the teacher only gave students a multiple choice test, then students who have barriers might not be successful even though they know the content.
For example, if a student has dyslexia or doesn't read or write as well as the others, one kind of test might not let the student be as successful as the others.
So if there are choices for students to show what they know, they might be more successful.
For example, if the teacher lets us choose to write an essay, make a diorama, make slides, make flip grids, or take photos, or make videos, then all students can choose an area that they are strong in so they can be successful. I'm a better student when I have choices because if an option is not a strong point for me, I can be more successful with a separate choice.
As a second grade student, I want to have choices because we can learn how to make choices that will help us be more successful. Every student deserves to learn, so students deserve to have choices. Thank you for listening.
Can we have the students and our administrator stand up, but also parents and siblings who came here to support your kiddos? Can y'all stand up as well so we can recognize y'all all with a round of applause? Thank y'all so much. If you cannot see the beaming smiles over here, we appreciate that information. Y'all did so great. Thank you for coming and sharing your learning with us. We'll move on to our next agenda item, School Board Recognition Month.
What a great way to celebrate, like movement, physical fitness. And especially after so long where we haven't been.
And I think that's really awesome that you've taken something that you said is really serious and personal to you and just given yourself all this information to empower yourself.
What do y'all like about this activity?
What I like about this is that you get to like use your mind and your creativity and you get to like work with all your teammates.
So Akbar, what product are you working on?
Well, we are building a new iPhone, but we're also making it very funny. So it's going to be like iPhone 30 Pro Max.
Tell me what you know about an obtuse angle.
It's greater than 90 degrees and less than 180.
And what do you think is the most important thing that the kids are taking from this class during their time here?
I would say self-confidence, self-respect, and self-discipline.
I like to see them learning from each other.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll be moving on to the next agenda item, Communication Announcements are Board Member Remarks. Board members, you'll notice that our committee updates are not in this section. If there was a board committee that has an update that's substantial and we need to deliberate on it, it's going to actually be in our agenda. So that's later in our agenda. This is the item that is Board Member Remarks. We list it out in our Board Operating Procedures. And just because we have two new board members, I'll read you Board Meetings. This item allows board members to highlight announcements of or attendance at school and community events, visits to campuses, recognition of outstanding performance by district staff and students, recognition of new programs and special activities, and committee updates. Remember, committee updates, I just gave you all that highlight, though. This agenda is an item that is not for an opportunity for trustees to make our statement general otherwise about their position on an issue or conditions. In the district, our community are to provide commentary on a topic. Again, it's just kind of those shout-outs of things that we've done and we saw with students, our programs, our activities. So, board members.
I'll kick us off. I know we've all been all over the place with Board Appreciation Month. I really love the way we've done our reverse appreciation and given us an opportunity to really just go to those campuses and appreciate on our staff and everything that's happening at those campuses. Last, you know, and if I miss someone, I apologize now. It's, we know it's all been, it's been busy. I, you know, had such a wonderful time at Mason Elementary. It was also their MLK Assembly, and they were kicking off their initiative of a Week of Kindness. And so it's part of a national week of kindness, and they go through random acts of kindness that you can spread on your campus to just promote kindness. And it was really fun to see the students so excited. And one of the first things, one of the students on the stage said, "Well, I want to kick it off." And the first thing she wanted to kick it off was smiling really big at 10 people near you. And the staff had this assembly really under control with all these little people. And then you have them like just try, like turn around and smile really big at the people near you. It was chaos for a little bit, but just how much fun just smiling at the people next to you, how contagious that is and how silly it was, but also fun. So that was wonderful, spending some time at Leander High School and just, you know, walking around with Principal Simpson and going into different classrooms. I got to sit in physics, an AP Physics class, and join in an activity, and it was fabulous. And then I know a lot of us had the pleasure of being a judge at the Vista Ridge High School Science Fair. I was blown away, blown away. And then you go home and you have to really not be that parent to your kids. Because you're like, "Let me tell you, I saw some kids that were a lot younger than you, and this is what their science project was." And you're like, "Okay, stop it. Don't be that parent. Don't be that parent, Mom." But just absolutely wonderful to see all of our teachers and staff just excited and supporting and just the students there blown away by what they're doing. And then I guess most recently, Blockhouse Creek, Dr. Dana, you know, walking me through the campus and just really every single grade level and just seeing all of that learning that's happening in all those spaces. And what I really loved was an older campus that doesn't have the same footprint and layout of all the different creative spaces of our new campuses and the way that she and her staff have really been creative to provide those opportunities and create those spaces and every little nook of that school of just making sure that those opportunities exist even if it's not, you know, built into the architecture of that school. So amazing job.
All right, I'll jump in. So yeah, like Gloria said, really busy. I got to go visit, got kind of go back to my roots and got to go visit Tarvin for their brand new Math Pentathlon program. So it was fantastic to get to visit with them and see those parents in action because they're, you know, jumping back into it and really kind of digging in and teaching those kids those games. And it was a lot of fun to kind of go back to that. Yesterday, I got to attend, to visit Fabian. So same as Blockhouse is, you know, they've really figured out ways to make those spaces really, really cool. So that was a lot of fun, too. The other thing was attending the musical at Vista Ridge. The Drowsy Chaperone was fantastic. A couple of us, I think, are going to go to a couple more this weekend prior to the Leaf Gala. So yeah, it's a busy, busy time. But I did get to visit with Deer Creek, who everyone got to see tonight, and understanding that, that learning that they're doing, the choice that's embedded in what they're doing on a daily basis. And got to visit with that second grade teacher who was here, and he's just fantastic, just the way that he had them just, you know, he was talking with them about a story and then how does it relate to your life? Okay, now everybody make a choice of how you're going to express how it relates to your life. And it was just eye-opening that, you know, they're not all just sitting at desks doing the same thing. It's, you know, you can prove your learning in lots of different ways, and it was just really, really neat to see. And let's see, I think I'm just looking back at the calendar because there's been so much stuff, and it's been great. Yes, like Gloria, the Vista Ridge Science Fair is, has been, I was thinking back on it, I think this was year seven for me to be a judge. I started when my, when my college junior was a freshman. So that's, it's been a lot of fun. So thank you to all the staff and students that have welcomed us to their schools. It's been just a fantastic way to get to see the real learning that's happening and the, you know, the decisions we make up here and to see them in action.
Anna and I had the opportunity to spend some time last week on Friday and Saturday at the LISD FFA show, and it was amazing. I only knew the animal part of FFA. I was not aware that these kids build incredible things. They do amazing work. And to watch them be so passionate about it, and they were so excited, and they took us around and explained everything. It was so much fun, and the work that they did was incredible. Then we got to go to the Cedar Park High School ribbon cutting for their new journalism room, which they're using a set that Kview had recycled. So they have a full-out news set in there, and they had all of their storyboards up, and you could see the work that they're doing and how they're developing everything, which was amazing to see. And then this afternoon, I got to spend some time out at Bush Elementary School in Steiner Ranch. And the kindergarten classrooms, they were building ramps and talking about engineering and friction, which I certainly was not doing in kindergarten, and they had so much fun. And the first grade classes, they were doing, they were given pictures and they had to turn the pictures into something it wasn't. So I got to talk with the kids and see how they were doing that and the work that they were doing. And just to go around and see how excited, how genuinely excited they all were to be in the classrooms. It was so much fun, and I really appreciate everybody at the campuses that took us around and showed us everything and allowed us to see how your day goes.
So I spent some time at Westside Elementary. I went to the Science Fair, and I was able to see the kindergarteners through fifth grade. They, different grades had science kits from the district and were able to explain what they were learning with those. And they also had some businesses from outside that came with their own. Like they had telescopes outside, and so they're looking at planets. And they had a zoo that brought some creatures. So there were different animals and creatures that they got to play with. And the Cedar Park High School students, robotic students, brought some of their gadgets and gizmos for the kids to play with as well. I also had lunch with the principal and assistant principals. So it was just a really nice experience getting to see and learn and talk about everything that's happening at Westside. And then I also visited Rouse, and that was, first of all, I was struck by just seeing how you have a building or, yeah, a campus that is built with specific programs in mind. And so I got, there was a huge focus on CTE during my visit, so I got to go to the garage where the automotive program is and also see that they are going to be, I mean, they're starting with teachers, but they are changing people's oil. They're doing oil changes for people, helping them with their brakes, and they'll at some point open it up and have people sign up to get that done. And so the kids are getting real-life experience there. They, I also got to visit the Fashion Design Center and also the culinary class. Got to the computer science, and I was able to work with someone to debug a program, so I felt really good about that. And I also got to visit, let's see, it was a lot, oh, the AV production, and I was really blown away. It's a good contrast with how things are being done at Cedar Park High School with the focus on the studio, and they are more focused on the field reporting and documentaries. And we could see that with the video that ended up in, that they ended up on PB, their video that ended up on PBS, and they're working on some more documentaries for some competitions and also working with the the Austin Film Festival as well. So, they're getting some really good documentary-type of experience as well. And they have a studio there that they use for their podcasts. So, they have podcasts out there on Spotify. They have, they do their, put their videos out on TikTok, Instagram, YouTube. And they're all getting, everywhere I went, there are all industry certifications associated with those as well. And got to visit a few classrooms and could see that I still have it when it comes to algebra, but not so much with chemistry. And so, it was, all in all, it was a wonderful visit. And I just want to say thank you so much to the staff for taking the time to really show us, and the students as well, to show us the great work that they're doing. Thank you.
I've been all over the place, so I'll only highlight a couple. I will say, one of my first visits was at Winkley Elementary, the Texas PTA Program, Kids First. It's one of my favorite. For those that don't know what it is, it's a program that brings awareness and information to our students about children with disabilities. And I will say, this is the first year that I've had a moment, which I know I always have a moment, but what was the most empowering thing I saw at Winkley was students who can relate to the disability being taught, talking to their peers about, "Hey, this is what it's like for me. Let me tell you what helps me." And to be able for a student to say that to their peers is the most powerful and bravest thing a student can do. But as a parent, it's like one of the, it's all you want for your children, to be able to talk and be accepted. And I, that's what I love this program, but this campus truly embraced it, had third, fourth, and fifth grade. And at each level, I saw this connection with each student with either visual impairment, autism, speech impediment, dyslexia. It just, I walked away just thinking, like, that just program is just such a powerful thing. It's so little, and it's run by volunteers, if y'all don't know. It's parent volunteers that are running this. And so, it is one of the best programs, I think, that our parents do in the district, and I just, I love it. So, then I went to Cedar Park Middle School, actually went to Westside and saw our Cedar Park Middle School Advanced Theater. And I don't know if y'all know, but there's this program called Page to Stage, and it is the coolest thing ever. And what it is, is our students, I believe at Noman, Cypress, and Westside, they, from third to fifth grade, they work with their theater arts teachers. So, you've got that art, fine arts coming in elementary. They write a play. Then the play then gets sent off to our advanced theater students at Cedar Park Middle School. There, these students go through all the submissions. They then pick seven, I believe, six or seven winners. These advanced theater students then write the play, make the props, direct the play, and then put on the play for the students. And so, it's a really big orchestrated event, but to see the students in third and fifth grade get excited about something they wrote, and then not only that, be acknowledged for it, but then see your older peers up there performing, putting life to it, that was the coolest thing ever. And it's just so amazing to see these students who just, their parents are excited, they were excited, they felt seen and heard. And that, I cannot wait to, I already told Amanda that I will be at every single Westside performance for that. I also went to, I know a lot of our high school parents are incoming or having blueprint nights and whatnot, and I have an incoming high schooler. So, I was at Glenn's Blueprint Night last night, and I did cry, we know that. But what I love about these high school nights, and I don't know if some of our parents have not experienced yet or are about to, or you have, is the student clubs are out there, and it's all student-led. And so, you have these amazing programs, and you think Student Council, you know, FFA, no. There's a Girl Scout program, there's a Dungeons and Dragons. There is every single type of topic organization you want, it is there, and you've got students telling incoming students what it's like. Like, it is the most, it was amazing for me for my daughter to sit up there and talk to someone, "Hey, tell me what it's like, tell me your experience." And then this student to be like, "Well, you know, I didn't know if that's really worked out, but this is what you should do." And, because I can tell her everything all day long, but I don't know anything, and y'all know that. But it was, I'm just so happy that our high schools are doing this. They're, it's really student-led, and I just, I can appreciate that. And then I also went to RBMS, this learning walkthrough. And y'all know I love just like listening and observing. And what I love, it's kind of like what the admin at the cabinet are doing, these campus walkthroughs. And so, they're doing it at the lower level. And what I love about it is our teachers are going into the classroom with us and observing other teachers and coming back, and what can we do to improve? Oh, I know what I can do. I can take this and, you know, I can help over here in my department. And one thing that stuck out was theater and English Arts, ELA. And they're like, "Why aren't we connecting? How can, they're reading and they're doing advanced theater. We should, it's just that collaboration." And y'all know, I love that stuff. And last but not least, everyone sees my beautiful painting. I went to Reed Elementary. The art teacher, Ms. Walker, is amazing. I had a really bad morning, and I walked in, and I got to tell you guys, that thing is going to hang up in my living room as soon as we get home. But I love this district. It was great. I love Board Appreciation Month, only because I get to connect with our staff, our principals, and our community. So, love it.
In the last few weeks, I was fortunate enough to go over to Leander High School and have Principal Simpson take me around, see some of the water damage and what they're working to mitigate that problem, what really great work they're doing. There's fantastic maintenance crew trying to work around the clock to get that back up and running. Several gyms were damaged. Then I also had the opportunity to go to Cedar Park High School and meet with Principal Sloan and Andy Garcia's news studio ribbon cutting was fantastic. The things that they had done, basically teacher-driven with parents and students to put that studio together so they could really make an effort to show the kids what it's really like to be in a newsroom and newscast. I love seeing the old-style casters, Barbara Walters, Peter Jennings, and then people like that. And also, in the last week, I was able to go to also the Vista Ridge High School and do the Science Fair competition, which was fantastic. Some of those kids are so smart and so unbelievable. I was a little surprised, though. I asked them, "What support did the district offer them? What are we giving them back?" And we're not doing as much as I would like us to do. I would love for us to offer some sort of, I don't know, scholarships or something for the winners. A group of girls, they got third in Nationals, and they did so good. I said, "You need to guard your intellectual property because only five people in the world know Coca-Cola, and you guys are trying to solve Alzheimer's, and you're going somewhere with it," which is amazing. And I said the same thing to another gal. She got an internship going to Mississippi last summer because she was working on dementia. And she, too, had something going somewhere. And there was another couple fellows that were working on microplastics removal of water. I'm like, "These are real-world things. You guys need to protect yourselves. You can show them how you kind of do it, but don't give away the secrets because that can really turn into something for you." These kids are super smart. So, I'd love to see something from the district where we award some of these truly gifted kids, and even some that just test to see where, how far a golf ball would go. Those are kind of interesting to talk to some of those kids as well. And also, I was lucky enough, I don't know how it happened, but I got tickets to the Governor's inauguration ball, and I brought some of the stuff that they sent me with the things around your neck. And it was an amazing experience, and I want to thank whoever sent those tickets. My wife and I had a great time. The Governor's Ball was amazing, it was everything you would think it would be. And, you know, got a chance to talk to some of our friends at the TEA about public school, public education, and just felt like it was such a wonderful opportunity to be with those folks in such an environment, so.
Well, it has been a busy, busy month, board members. With your permission, I'm going to save mine. I'll do my remarks next time. We have a lot of citizens here, but I am excited. There's, I love Board Appreciation Month. There are so many activities. Remember, we get to pace ourselves. We're going to go all year long. And I will say, okay, give me one second, is that I went to River Place, and I went to Larkspur, and the stuff the administrators are doing, the teacher, they had the empowerment for the teachers, and now the teachers are empowering the staff. Two different experiences at each campus, and it was amazing stuff and energy with learning going on. Okay, there, I did it under 30 seconds. All right, we got to get on to our citizen comments, and we have a video before we start to kind of set the pace for citizen comments.
The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body charged with serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren in the Leander Independent School District, like me. As they pursue their mission to cultivate an individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment, the Board is now taking up the citizen's common agenda item, which is time set aside during this meeting to hear from the whole community, which can include a wide audience of the entire LISD family. Still, remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the Board. You can send them an email, come to a Board Cafe, or you can just tell them that you'd like to chat sometime. The district believes the Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. Board operating procedures and BED, local specified guidelines, so it is important that you have read them before you speak. The Board wants to hear from everyone, but still asks you to be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. If you are presenting material that only certain high schoolers may encounter, remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in Board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even come see some of us in the audience. When the Board President calls your number, remember, watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
All right, and for our board and audience at home, as we do our citizen comments, we have a process in our Board Operating Procedures where students will be always put up to the top of the citizen comments. So, you'll probably notice our younger speakers first. Without further ado, Speaker One.
So, on, okay. Hi, I'm Ava Chalmers, a sophomore at Vandergrift High School and co-captain of the Vandergrift Girls Water Polo Team. I also wrote the petition supporting UIL Water Polo in Leander School District that received over 1,000 signatures. I know that water polo may not be the first thing that comes to your mind when you think of what you can do to help students in the school district. But as a teenager, I can inform you that water polo makes all the difference in the world for me. One of the best things about water polo is that just about anyone can play. For example, I have an injury that doesn't allow me to play any sports that involve running or high impact, which is actually what led me to join water polo. Water polo provides kids with a sport when they may otherwise be left out of athletic activities. It would be such a loss, I think, for this to no longer be an option for such students. Many students across the district agree that UIL Water Polo should not be canceled and should continue to be allowed to grow and develop. The petition sent out to the district shows that we have over 400 LISD students who support continuing UIL Water Polo in Leander and 201 LISD students that are interested in playing. Thank you for your support and help in reinstating water polo in our district.
Thank you, Speaker Number One. Speaker Number Two.
I am Cadence Wilkinson, student at Cedar Park High School and a member of the Girls Water Polo Team. I have done many sports throughout my life. When I joined water polo as a freshman, I discovered that this sport was by far my most favorite. As someone who's not very tall, I really appreciate the fact that in water polo, we are all the same height. In sports like basketball and volleyball, people who are tall have a serious advantage. In our team, there are several very short girls, and almost no other sport would work for them. Another thing about water polo that I love is getting closer to my team through difficult games and getting to know and being with my teammates. Water polo was wonderful as a freshman, and this year, as a sophomore, when water polo became a UIL sport, it was even more amazing than it had been before. We fought hard as a team this year, and we found success despite our small team and lack of experience. So, please do not get rid of water polo. Don't get rid of the moment when our newest player scores their first goal, the moment when we play our rival and win in the last second, the moments when we spend more time lifting up our teammates than judging ourselves, and the moment when I truly knew what it meant to be a part of a team that needs me. Please do not get rid of water polo. I sincerely hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Two. Speaker Number Three.
I stand before you today because of a miracle. A little less than 16 years ago, my mom gave birth to a set of quintuplets. Prior to this birth, to my birth, doctors everywhere told my mom that she should abort at least two or three of her babies because the chances of survival for both her and my siblings were extremely low. In their minds, having quintuplets with my mom's small five-foot-two frame was a setup for failure. But my mom didn't listen to the doctors, to the professionals, to the statistics. Even though she knew it would be hard, she fought. And in the end, she ended up with five very healthy, record-breaking quints. My name is Cassidy Wilkinson, and I am a sophomore this year at CPAHS. As a hopeful water polo player, I know it will be hard, just like my mom knew it would be all those years ago, but I won't give up. Instead, I will fight. I will be the woman that said yes when everyone else told her no. And I ask that you join me, that you join us in our fight, so that together, we might see another miracle. The miracle of five quints who don't agree on a single thing but are all in love with the same sport. The miracle of hard work paying off in the final shot. The miracle of the smile on a teammate's face despite the losing score. The miracle of water polo.
Thank you, Speaker Three. Speaker Number Four.
My name is Cash Brown. I'm an eighth grader, and I'm an up-and-coming freshman to Vista Ridge High School. I've been playing water polo for three years, and I've loved every second of it. I feel that me and my friends would really like to continue our water polo careers to Vista Ridge, and I was hoping to have water polo as one of my main sports for high school. And to see it be ripped away from me is quite saddening to me and my friends. I had hoped to make so many friends and connections through this sport, and I hope that you might have second feelings through this speech. I've made so many new connections, new connections, and I just loved the sport from the very minute I've started. Although I might not have many statistics or anything to prove my statement, I wish that, I wish that you might reconsider everything, and you give me a hope to have more friends. And I do have plenty of friends, but I'd like to expand that. And I have so many people from Vista Ridge who are also hoping to have water polo next year, and I wish to see them and have some fun with them, and I'd love to play some ball with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker Number Four. Speaker Number Five.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I thank you for being here tonight. My name is Trevor Von Wupperfeld, and I've been playing water polo for about five years now, and I am a junior at Cedar Park High School. This season, I woke up every morning at 5:00 AM, and I got ready. I ate breakfast, and I packed my bag for school and got ready to go, and I went to water polo. 6:00 AM practice every morning, every day of the week. I, as well as 30 other members of my team, did this every day without complaint. We, and this is because we have such pride in our sport. There's a large degree of playing, there's a large degree of pride that comes with playing a high school sport, I believe. I take pride that I am able to represent my sport, or I am able to represent my school in my sport. I take pride that my friends come and watch my games because they know how much it means to me to play this sport. I take pride that I'm a member of my team. Many of us are considering playing water polo at the collegiate level, but the simple fact of the matter is that colleges do not value our club membership as much as they do our high school careers. I worry that Leander ISD deciding to cease its support of UIL Water Polo will lessen my chances of being able to play at the collegiate level, as I would like to, or... Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Speaker number five. Speaker number six.
Hello, my name is Eric Bryan Crockett. I am 10 years old. You might be asking yourself, why should I listen to a 10-year-old? Because this 10-year-old has won two gold medals at the Junior Olympics in water polo. That is something that has never happened before in Texas, not at any age level. How did that happen? It happened with the help of my great teammates and coaches. It happened with the support of my parents, and it happened because our water polo program was available. It is this boy's dream to be a water polo player. Please bring water polo back to Leander Independent School District. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Speaker number six. Speaker number seven.
Hi, my name is Ashley Nelson. I'm a Cedar Park High School senior, and I'm one of the captains of the Cedar Park High School Water Polo Team. I'm here to talk to you today about why water polo is extremely important to me and my team. I've been participating in water polo since I was a freshman in high school. Yes, it was cut short due to COVID, but playing those first few games really inspired me to continue to play and experience how great this sport is. When I found out water polo was becoming a UIL sport this year, I was extremely happy but also a little sad because it would be the first and last year I would be able to participate in water polo for the school and especially the UIL season. I was very happy because water polo has been a part of Cedar Park High School for the past five years. It has really helped us grow as a team. When I found out water polo was being cut, I was very heartbroken. This meant that the schools would not have a water polo team and that many kids who loved the sport would not be able to play in any of the LISD schools. This includes freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and especially any incoming eighth graders who are looking forward to play their sport their freshman year. I think LISD schools have shown how dedicated we are to keep this sport alive. A few examples would be Cedar Park High School making first in districts and beating out their top competitor, Waco. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number seven. Speaker number eight.
Thank you, esteemed school board members, for being here tonight. My name is August Pritzloff, and I am the junior team captain of the Cedar Park Boys Water Polo Team. I have been playing water polo for five years now. And when I started, I instantly fell in love with water polo as it creates a community and sense of belonging like no other. And when I heard water polo would become a UIL sport and time for me to participate in my high school career, it became just about the only thing I looked forward to. I have played many sports in my life, but water polo is truly like no other. Through its ability to create a tight-knit community of athletes and coaches, as well as provide an immense amount of leadership and teamwork experience, this makes water polo, and really any sport, indispensable to the students who participate in high school. Water polo was my outlet during the pandemic. When so much of our social interaction was limited due to the lockdowns, it allowed me to connect to a group of people who I see every day and relate through our shared victories and defeats in the name of our school. Removing water polo as a sanctioned school sport is detrimental to the kids who rely on water polo as our only sport as it devalues our accomplishments as student athletes and de-incentivizes success in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number eight. Speaker number nine.
Hi, my name is Aaron Gordon. I'm a current sophomore at Vandergrift High School. I played water polo this past fall under UIL and in the spring of 2022 for high school. I'm speaking in hopes of the board helping us save water polo for next fall. High school water polo has helped me become closer than ever before with my fellow swim teammates at Vandergrift. Water polo is a unique opportunity for swimmers to reap the benefits of experiencing a team sport without having to give up swimming. The camaraderie, the most easily seen benefit of water polo, is still seen today from one water polo player to another. In addition to the friendships I made, high school is the easiest way for competitive swimmers to be able to play water polo. I've been playing club water polo for over eight years and am a competitive swimmer, swimming up to 11 times per week. Swimming 11 times per week, Monday to Friday and Saturday morning, with high school only allows me to realistically go to a club water polo practice once a month since many Sundays are also filled with swim competitions. High school water polo in the fall allowed me to be able to practice my water polo skills as much as three times as often, having water polo up to three times a week on Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. Replacing high school swim practices or the addition of water polo practices can adequately support competitive swimmers who have the desire to play water polo. I hope this helps the board understand a few reasons as to why water polo is needed within our community. Thank you for listening, and I hope we can find solutions to these problems together.
Thank you, Speaker number nine. Speaker number 10.
Is it on? Okay. Thank you, board members, for being here tonight. I'm Jonathan Kowsky from Cedar Park High School. I started water polo in eighth grade, and back then, I was skinny, lazy. I was new to Texas, and I was not confident. Two years later, and I gained lifelong friends. I'm healthier than I've ever been, and I received a community which I love and motivates me to go to school and stay happy. And finally, I can stand up for myself, and my friends have helped me and taught me lessons that are important for life. I've found that this is the sport that I want to go to college with, and the high school season is what I need since club practice is only go three days a week, and this addition helps me get more practice for the sport that I love. The high school season is impactful for college recruitment, and it's nice to be able to put a name to the sport that you worked hard for over a long period of time. When I played basketball, I didn't feel like I had the friends and teammates which I could rely on and hang out with when I needed friendships. Water polo is quite the opposite. We used to hang out almost every day outside of school and in school. I truly rely on the school season to be fit for collegiate play, and I thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number 10. Speaker number 11. Speaker number 11? Number 12?
I'm Ace Calagia, a senior water polo player from Vandergrift. I'm here to support the cause and also have a statement from... or sorry, to read from Noah Lutrelli, a junior water polo player from Cedar Park High School. Hi, my name is Noah Lutrell. I did not start playing water polo until my second semester of my sophomore year. While I haven't been playing as long as some of my other teammates, I quickly came to love the sport. I've done many sports over my life, but I've never exceeded a one like I did in water polo. I was mediocre at other sports, not good but not bad, until water polo. I finally found the sport I loved and something I could truly be a part of. The team at Cedar Park struggled at the beginning of the season with coaching and pool space, but even with those struggles, we figured out drills and things we can do just led by our captains. Over the year, our team grew closer from crying over tough losses to celebrating tougher wins. Water polo is the one sport I felt like I belonged in. Finally, I was finally able to excel in like I always hoped. Not only is the team close, but I've made so many other friends on the opposing teams. It's left me with so many friendships, and I don't want to be without it my senior year. And I want to give the future a chance to experience the toughness and bonds that water polo builds up in all of us, teammates and opponents. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number 12. Speaker number 13.
Hi, my name is Tristan, and I'm an eighth grader at Canyon Ridge Middle School. Next year, I was hoping to play water polo at Vandergrift, but so far, apparently, it's not going to happen. For six years, I have been playing this sport, and I have fallen in love with it, and it's impossible to explain. There's such companionship from teammates when you lose and when you win. And even with players not on your team that you practice with every day, you still bond with them over the sport that you play together and play against each other. I find it fun to play against my friends and make connections with other people, and I hope to do it throughout my high school years. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number 13. Speaker number 14. Speaker number 14?
My name is Gabriel Alamon, and I go to Vandergrift High School. I am here today to speak to you about the proposed cancellation of our water polo program. I understand that difficult decisions must be made in regards to our school's budget and resources, but I strongly believe that cutting the water polo program would be a mistake. This year's season was one of the most enjoyable experiences for me, not only because of the sport itself, but also because of the team aspect of the game. Being part of the water polo team this year brought me closer to my teammates and built a stronger relationship with them than anyone else on the swim team. I have been a dedicated swimmer for most of my life, and not only did water polo complement my swimming skills, but it also helped me to develop valuable teamwork skills. I can tell you that the interest in participating in the water polo program is high, and we are all passionate about the sport. I understand that budget constraints may be a concern, but I believe that if we work together, we can find alternative solutions that could help to address this issue, as many other schools have. I ask that you reconsider your decision to cancel the water polo program. I urge you to invest in the future of the water polo program and ensure that it remains an integral part of our school's athletic department. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Speaker number 14. Speaker number 15.
Hello, board members. My name is Michelle Alamon, and I'm in eighth grade at Canyon Ridge Middle School and will go to Vandergrift next year. I have been swimming since I was five-year-olds. I have two older brothers who are both on the Vandergrift swim team, and they both played water polo in our past season. I watched them play for two years now, and this is a sport I have eagerly wanted to try. High schoolers love water polo, but so do plenty of middle schoolers. I know lots of swimmers and students who would love to experience this sport. This sport shows hard work and discipline. I watch my siblings mature and grow friendships through water polo. It builds communication skills, gives exercise, and creates bonds, overall having what seemed to be a great experience. I think cutting our water polo program would be a grave error for our district and students. I believe our district should have a water polo program like other districts in our area. I hope you reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number 15. Speaker number 16.
Hi there. My name is Claire Braun, and I'm a player at the... in the Westwood High School Water Polo Team in Round Rock ISD. I hope that you will hear my point of view, even though I'm not in your school district. I address you all today to urge you to bring back the water polo program totally under ISD schools. I started playing water polo almost a year ago, and at the time, I was a pretty antisocial kid. I went to practice just offhand one day to try something new, and immediately, the players and coaches brought me into the fold. Soon after, I joined a club team and haven't stopped playing since. Now, these people, many of whom play for LISD teams, are my closest friends, and I can't imagine not ever having played this sport and not ever meeting them. As water polo is ever growing and gaining new players, it continues to create so much community for everyone involved in the game, a community which is still growing in Austin. Yesterday, USA Water Polo recognized the petition to reinstate water polo in LISD schools on social media. We have only just been recognized as a UIL sport. We are being seen for the first time, and that matters. Water polo creates family. It creates community. It gives people an outlet. Please, please don't change that. Instead, help us continue the growth of water polo in this amazing community in Leander ISD, in our city, and in our state. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number 18. Speaker number 16. Speaker number 17 is next.
Thank you for being here, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Harrison, and I'm neither very fast at swimming or like to play football. And I spent a lot of my life looking for a sport that I would enjoy. And about seven years ago, I found that in water polo. The sport is very fun, and it's very satisfying to score the game-winning goal. But the thing I appreciate most about water polo is the teammates and community you build with it. When you're sprinting as hard as you can down the pool, you can't see, you can hardly breathe, you have to trust in your teammates to have your back and successfully pull off whatever you're trying to accomplish. And that really creates a community with strong bonds and a lasting effect on a person. That's why I would suggest that you keep water polo in LISD. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker 17. Speaker number 18.
I get to follow the kids, oh boy. Good evening, Madam President, board members, Superintendent Gearing. I am Craig Pritzloff, parent of a water polo player at Cedar Park High School and a longtime parent at LISD. I stand here today firmly against the district's decision to discontinue the sport of water polo for three reasons. First, as a former youth coach, I understand the value of sport and its importance for childhood development. Sport teaches many life lessons, including the value of hard work, the value of working together towards a common goal, the value of shared victories, the value of overcoming loss with others, the value of experiencing and learning to manage emotion during those victories and defeats, and the value of having fun and making memories for life. The district has taken this away for over 100 students, many of whom, as you heard today, don't have another sport option. Which brings up my second point. The district has taken away something from so many students at a time when they were just recovering from the pandemic. The lockdowns and illness left a lasting negative impact on many of these boys and girls, and this sport is what kept many of them going during and after the pandemic. The message sent to these kids is one of continued loss, disappointment, and lack of support from the institution meant to serve them at a critical time when they need such support. Which brings up my final point. The district made this decision in a vacuum without input from the impacted kids, the parents, booster clubs, or the community, which is groundswelling around water polo across Texas. Water polo is the first sport admitted to the UIL in over two decades. It's no easy feat. By operating in the shadows, the district is ignoring the students it serves, its parent taxpayers, and the UIL. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker number 18. Speaker number 19.
Sorry about that. Thank you so much for your service to the district, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Kristin, and we have had three kids who have attended LISD starting in kindergarten, a 2016 graduate, a 2019 graduate, and a current sophomore. Tonight, I'm here asking the board to support LISD's continued participation in UIL Water Polo. My sophomore has been playing eight and a half years and couldn't wait to play in high school. Last spring, their team barely scraped together enough kids to play in region, and this year, they had 19 boys. It's amazing growth already. The athletic office cited facilities as the biggest obstacle, so I wanted to share some ideas that we had about how to deal with that. The first one is that we could focus on the water polo season. The first one is that we could focus on the water polo season and then switch over to swimming. In San Antonio, this approach produced plenty of state champs in both water polo and swimming. You could also do practices like Cedar Park, have polo first, and then swim. A third alternative would be to split the days of the week. So you could do it informally, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, swim, Tuesday, Thursday, polo, or you could make it formal by doing an A day for swim and a B day for polo and allow kids to choose whether they want to participate in one or both of those. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker nineteen. Thank you, let's make sure, speaker nineteen. Next speaker, speaker twenty.
Thank you to the board for your service. I'm Mary Pritzloff, CPHS Water Polo Parent and Booster Club President. I'm here to advocate that the players and families of this district do have the time, resources, and commitment to ensure that water polo succeeds as a UIL sport at LISD. Last year, we found ourselves at CPHS with no coach at the beginning of the summer and nothing had been done to set up water polo for the coming season other than to select the team. We realized that we had a matter of weeks to organize if we were going to be ready for the start of the water polo season. The booster club and team captains successfully created avenues for team communication, procured uniforms, determined a place for practice, and organized team functions and practices before our coach was even hired and without district resources. We already have dedicated a tremendous amount of time, resources, and commitment to standing up water polo at CPHS and supporting it through the season. And our counterparts at the other schools are equally as dedicated. The athletes and families of this district are committed to the success of water polo and it's disappointing that the district athletic department did not give us a voice in this decision. I'm asking for the board's support in restoring water polo as a, as a UIL sport and thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, speaker twenty. Speaker twenty-one.
I wish I had something to say about water polo, but what I will say is, you guys rut, kids. Keep letting your voice be known. What I came to speak about tonight is another issue about constitutional freedoms and rights that need to be protected, and I want to illustrate it with an example of my own life. I train my kids, I encourage my kids and any of my loved ones, family, and friends with my experience, never, ever click on anything that you receive in an email or on your phone. Don't even answer unknown phone calls because many times, those things are people with not good intentions for you trying to invade your privacy. That example that I illustrated is a concern that many of us have, many parents have, about the intrusion that we feel from some of the unwanted surveys that you administer our kids. They're an invasion of our privacy and an invasion, a violation of the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution. We have the right to freedom and privacy and we have the right to be, have our permission requested before that privacy is invaded. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number twenty-one. Speaker number twenty-two.
Thank you all for your service to Leander ISD. I'm also Team Water Polo. My son Ace, who you heard from earlier, is a senior and a captain and the goalie at Vandergrift High School. Playing water polo was the highlight of Ace's high school experience and his dad and I are so grateful that he had the opportunity. We're really hoping it continues for other students in the district. Over the last two weeks, this community has been asking questions and trying to understand the decision to cut water polo. The athletic department has listed several challenges, but all of the challenges are solvable. We've offered solutions and asked more questions, but unfortunately, the athletic department isn't budging. So we're here tonight asking you for your support and asking you to help us advocate for these athletes. From the athletics website, it is the goal of the LISD athletic program to offer the opportunity of participation to every student who has the ability and desire to do so. The students behind me and others that they represent have the ability and the desire to play water polo. Please help us ensure the athletic department lives up to its own goals. Please help us save water polo for these student athletes.
Thank you, speaker twenty-two. Speaker twenty-three.
Hi, my name is Lena Chamas and I have four kids in the district. Three of my kids are currently playing water polo. My daughter Ava Chamas played at Vandergrift this year. I'm here seeking your support in continuing the UIL water polo program in LISD. I want to be clear that if the district cancels this program, they are doing a huge disservice to lots of LISD students. The students, for my kids and many other kids, this water polo program is a place to belong, a path to college, a place to feel strong and successful, a healthier lifestyle, an opportunity to make new friends, an environment that encourages team bonding and teamwork, a sport that pushes them mentally and physically, which in turn makes them better students, better citizens, and better human beings. Why would the district take this away from our children, especially when surrounding districts are embracing the sport? Round Rock ISD, Eyns District, and Austin ISD are all running water polo next year. Advice from our athletic director is to have our kids play their high school club team next year. The problem is that all the other school districts are now playing UIL, so there won't be anyone to play with. Please help the district reconsider their decision. Let's come together for these kids and work hard, do the work that needs to be done so they can benefit from this amazing sport. No one here is looking for perfect solutions for the next school year, but let's let the kids play water polo.
Thank you, speaker twenty-three. Speaker twenty-four.
Thank you for taking the time to hear our collective passion for water polo. We need your support to help Leander Athletics and Student Activities do the right thing and reinstate water polo for next fall UIL season. Please understand that water polo finally being a UIL sport at Vandergrift was a dream years in the making. For our family personally, with three current water polo athletes in Leander Schools, having it become a team sport at Vandergrift was a vital element to our decision to move to Stoner Ranch, knowing that Vandergrift has a good swim program and that UIL water polo was imminent across the state of Texas. So it was with elation and joy that we got to see our daughter Ava play water polo for Vandergrift as a sophomore this year. Perfect. Then to our shock and our dismay, two weeks ago, that Leander Athletics was canceling our water polo program for next year. It's unbelievable. The problems are clear and the solutions are clear. We need water polo head coaches for each high school that has enough interest to field teams, as we do at Vandergrift, Cedar Park, and Vista Ridge. While pools are a limited resource, the decision to share a pool in the morning with the swim team for a few months during water polo season is trivial to support, and an expanded program with an afternoon practice during which most pools are free would take things to the next level. We understand it is difficult to change decisions. Logistics, head counts, budgets would need to be revised and coaches allocated for the program, but it's all feasible, reasonable, and quite frankly, expected that Leander ISD would invest in our kids' futures as we have invested in this community. Please support the 700 Leander students and parents and 140 student athletes that want to play water polo at their high schools next year in continuing the program and building on the momentum of the last UIL water polo season. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker twenty-four. Speaker twenty-five.
Good evening and thank you for your service to our children. My name is Christian Von Wupperfeldt and I am the proud parent of a Cedar Park High School Water Polo student athlete. I'm here tonight to discuss transparency. In my eight years in the district, I've been impressed by LISD's efforts to solicit input from stakeholders. Within just the last week, I've been contacted about signing up for flash vote and rezoning of the middle schools. However, no such efforts were made when the decision to discontinue water polo was made. Despite being known to the district and coaches, water polo parents and players were left out of all discussions regarding the future of water polo in the district. While the, while the decision to end water polo was made more than a week before the winter break, parents and players did not learn of that decision until January 12th, a month later. When we did learn of the decision, we were shocked to find that no discussions had been ongoing throughout, that, we were shocked to learn that the discussions had been going on throughout the season. Not including parents and students in the conversations about water polo's future undermines trust. It's hard to imagine a decision to eliminate any other sport would be made without input from the student athletes and their parents. Of greater importance, not including parents and students left the coaches and district alone to address the challenges of implementing a new sport. The issues they have identified are real and we recognize that. However, as parents and students have demonstrated since learning of water polo's cancellation, we are ready, willing, and able to find creative solutions to those issues. By not including us from the beginning, the district denied itself a powerful problem-solving resource. We ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker number twenty-four. Speaker number twenty-five? Oh, sorry, twenty-five, that was twenty-five. Speaker number twenty-six. Okay? If not, speaker number twenty-six. Speaker number twenty-seven? All right, if not, speaker twenty-seven. We'll go to speaker twenty-eight.
Hi, my name is Joel Berkew. I've got two kids in the school district. I wasn't, they don't play water polo, but I was, you know, listening to all the students here today. It just makes me awe-inspired for our kids in the future, so I'm sold for water polo, even though I didn't know anything about it before I came in here, so. I actually came here because I know this is School Board Appreciation Month and I know that from school board members, you know, you guys don't get a lot of the credit that you deserve and, and I'm talking about all school board members. I really appreciated everybody going out into the community. I saw people doing the science fair, which personally means a lot to me because I participated in the science fair when I was in high school and that really had a big impact on my life. So, one of the things, I wanted to come out here today and just thank you for all your service as well. I know we're going to have a lot of hard decisions coming forward. One thing I'm going to encourage you guys to do is, similar to what you did for Prop A and Prop B, if we have any things like bonds or anything coming up, I think educating the community like you did in the past is very, very critical. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, speaker number twenty-eight. Speaker twenty-nine.
Hi there, I got three kids in the district and so grateful to be in this district. It's an amazing experience. I do have a sophomore at Cedar Park High School who had his first UIL experience with Cedar Park water polo and thrived. He, don't want to brag, but scored the first goal in Cedar Park's history of water polo. But we had a great experience and seeing him thrive, the community involved, these kids really came together and it turned us into a fan of water polo. I grew up in Southern California where water polo was a big deal. Kids walking around campus, not only the football, basketball, baseball players like myself, but the water polo players were amongst us as well. And so, to see the culture just stopped, it kind of hurts our heart. We'd love for you guys to reinstate this, to be able to have our kids play this again. It's just the beginning of a precedence of growing and becoming big. We'd love to see it just get bigger and bigger and bigger and it has the potential. Our kids have the inability to thrive. You see the community here willing to grow. We ask for you guys to keep it growing. Thanks.
Thank you, speaker number twenty-nine. Speaker number thirty.
Okay, so I wasn't going to talk about water polo, but I have such passion for kids, I can't help but discuss this. So, you board members, I think, are a little bit loco because football keeps on going, but it's a dangerous sport, so if you're a football player, that's okay, but not water polo. Hmm, I have to wonder about this. You students should protest. It's hard to believe you were nominated on the board and can't figure out a budget for these students wanting to continue water polo. I wonder if they propose to cancel football, what might that look like tonight? You, you would have your hands full tonight. That would be like cutting out the ROTC program, which is only around a little over 100 students on a good year. Okay? I'm sorry to you, parents and students, but you're being deceit, this, this board here is deceitful and it's the number one thing for the school board. I hope you recognize that tonight. That's it.
Thank you, speaker number thirty. Speaker thirty-one.
Those kids were awesome. Y'all rock. Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Gearing. It's Board Appreciation Month and I wanted to start by saying how much you're appreciated for all the time and effort you put into this often thankless job. I know how hard you work for our district and how much of your otherwise free time is spent at meetings, visiting schools, and so much more. We do appreciate you. I also wanted to talk quickly about the possible upcoming bond. I've heard a lot of outrage throughout the parent community about the probable rezoning that needs to be done. We do know that's a direct result of the last bond's failure, 200 votes. It failed by 200 votes. And why? It's because the community wasn't well-informed and a majority skipped voting altogether. There was a small group spreading misleading information and actively working to ensure the bond's failure, and that's unacceptable. We can't allow a small minority of extremists to negatively affect our district that way ever again. I hope that for any upcoming bonds, our district leaders can work hard to educate the community as was done for the last propositions on the November ballot. We know it's not about politics, it's about the health, safety, and well-being of our kids, teachers, and staff. This is about ensuring LISD remains a sought-after district in which to live. I believe if everyone was able to hear what committee members heard during, about the state of our schools, this would be an absolute yes, so I'm hopeful we can come together as a community and do what's best for our kids. Thank you all.
Thank you, speaker number thirty-one. Speaker thirty-two.
Hello, thank you guys again for all your time and commitment. Love seeing all the extra activity on campuses this week with the Board Member Appreciation Month. And I just wanted to talk a little bit, I know that y'all are having to go through the experimentation of looking at what rezoning secondary schools are about. I appreciate you sent the information out showing which neighborhoods were being impacted by the move. One piece of information I want to see is, my kids are not going to be affected by moving schools. However, relocating students from one school to another is going to change the amount of students on a campus and I think it's important for parents to know how that's going to impact the population. My kids may not have to change schools, but what if their school's now going to be over capacity? I don't know. That information hasn't been provided yet. I do look forward and appreciate the opportunity for us to ask questions and collaborate as y'all are continuing to figure out what you need to do. The other thing that would be really helpful, I'm kind of a visual person, so having a map that shows, you know, colors for each school, this is this zone before and this is what it looks like after, I think will also help parents understand where the populations are and why it's such a difficult decision for those of us that, you know, have a hard time looking at the information with a bunch of neighborhood numbers. So thank you and I appreciate learning more as you do.
Thank you, speaker thirty-two. Speaker thirty-three.
Hi, my name is Catherine Meyer and I'm a water polo player at Westwood High School. In this day and age, with technology, we don't really have a moment to unplug. So many teenagers use sports to take that break. Sports aren't just a good brain break, but they are also a, also a good way to find support. I know for me, my team has been my family. They're there for me through thick and thin. So all in all, this is why I think LISD should keep their water polo for upcoming years. Thank you.
Thank you, speaker thirty-three. Speaker thirty-four. Speaker thirty-four, not here. Speaker- Speaker 35.
Thank you to the board members, to the wonderful teachers and staff of Leander ISD, and especially just tonight, I wanna say thank you to the Leander Police Department officers who are here to protect us. Our daughters aren't here tonight, but they do send their regards. They've been coming to the board for the bulk of a year. I think it'll become clear why they're not here tonight. We had MLK Day on the 16th, and wonderful to see so many teachers, school groups, and board members, a majority of the board there, celebrating that wonderful day and honoring Dr. King, his memory and what he sought to achieve. That morning, the Aryan Freedom Network, which is a neo-Nazi offshoot of the Ku Klux Klan, leaf-litted large parts of northern Leander where that event happened, because they were trying to dehumanize people and drive them out of public spaces. We've seen behavior like that in the schools, in board meetings, and online. And my contention to you is that this, this Klan group offshoot is to the black people and mixed-race families and race traitors who have black and biracial kids in our school district, as kids who have threatened, as people who threaten to shoot kids going to a school library meeting, are to those kids and their families. And we just greatly appreciate that the school board has done, and the school, I should say, schoolteachers are aware and have done some outreach, and I would encourage you to think about how you can better support others as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, speaker 35. Speaker 36.
It was very upsetting to see that Aryan Network information all over the news last week. It's amazing that some people come to these meetings and bash the school trustees because y'all are doing things about diversity and inclusion and justice, when we have things like this happening. It just goes to show how important those things are, and how much we need them in this school district. We've had N-word situations happen at football games, that things weren't done that night about. That's absolutely, that should not happen. If an N-word is said at a sporting event, that player needs to be ejected that night, that very night. And whether that's a school trustee issue, or for somebody else, that needs to be dealt with. But most importantly, I wanna thank all of you, the energy coming from you when you talk about the things that you've been doing, and the energy that comes from our students when they talk about the great things going on in their schools. Leander ISD is an incredible place, and you're doing incredible work, and we really, really appreciate it. We know it's a lot of work, a lot of long hours, but thank you very much.
Thank you, speaker number 36. Speaker number 37. Speaker number 37.
Good evening, neighbors on the board. How are you? I wanted to, I wanted to say thank you to the water polo parents and also their kids. Amazing, amazing demonstration. Good speaking skills. It's pretty fantastic, actually. So, I guess I should start by saying, maybe we can use some of the DEI money in this district and apply it to the water polo program? Maybe that's not too bad an idea. So, apropos, there was a Wall Street Journal article that just came out, Chris Rufo, somebody you should know, if you don't, great name, or James Lindsay, another good one you should know. Have written quite a bit about CRT, as you know, one of my favorite topics, and also DEI. Let me just read something real quickly. He says, "DEI is the bureaucratic expression, expression of CRT. It's antithetical to the ideals of open inquiry, academic merit, equality under law, and the pursuit of truth." DEI is also a fig leaf for racism. I think you know that. He has two suggestions, actually four in here, but I'll just real quickly, because I've only got 12 seconds. He wants to abolish the DEI bureaucracy that works against the academic norms and of freedom and true seeking. He wants to end identity-based preferences and go back to what MLKs say, which is colorblindness. Thank you.
All right, thank you, speaker number 37. That concludes our citizen comments/remarks. For all of our students who are here this evening, thank you so much for coming to speak out. Thank you for all of our citizen comments, but y'all know we're gonna say thank you to our students. I, yeah, go ahead, please. So that y'all know, when we don't have something posted on agenda, we cannot deliberate on agenda, on non-posted items. So the board cannot discuss tonight. I'm not sure if something happens tangential in discussion, but as far as I know, there's, well, no, I do know, it's not, there's nothing here to discuss. But administration will be following up with you, and I also anticipate they will be following up with the board. If not, let me just go and say, please follow up with the board, and let us know how these conversations occur. Thank y'all so much for coming out. All right, we're gonna move on to our next agenda item, and I, I know we would love to go be able to, to talk to, I know, board members are going, students! But, bye, and thank y'all for coming. Board members, I'd like to direct your attention to the agenda that we have this evening, and point out that after the superintendent report, if you look at the discussion items, there are approximately six different items. A1, that should take about 30 minutes. Governance item, B1, about 30 minutes. B2, about 30 minutes. On Operation, C1, about 30 minutes. C2, about 30 minutes. And hopefully, maybe 3 and 4, 30 minutes. That's six hours, no, that's three hours worth of meetings if we stay at 30 minutes. If we go through a full hour, wait, we just lost a trustee, well, we didn't lose quorum. If we go further than 30 minutes, then we'll be doubling our time. So, again, we need to deliberate, we need to talk, we need to deal with the items in front of us, but that's why we're gonna keep moving forward. We'll go ahead and go to our next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Oh, yeah. I need either a motion to sever or approve. I motion we approve the, the consent agenda as presented. I have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to the superintendent report.
Thank you, board members. Madam President, it is heartwarming to hear at the start of the meeting, the absolute commitment and involvement of all of you as board members in getting to the grassroots where the rubber meets the road, in the classrooms with the kids, as far as on the floor with the kids. And so, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate that. Heard this at Culture Day, "My principal sees me as a human first and a teacher second." And that hit me really hard. I think that's very powerful and very important. And then, at the MLK event on the weekend, this teacher on the left is brand-new to our system, but already she's embraced the culture of LISD and empowered these students who approached her and said, "We'd really like to form a club to showcase what we know and who we are and what our culture is." And so, she said yes. And already, within a few months of starting with these kids, had them out in the public, sharing their culture and inviting other people in to the conversation. And I just found that so powerful. And it really plays to what we call the Leander Way. And the Leander Way is about building relationships and trust, and ethical behaviors, about thinking about students first, about the systems that we have in place to make sure that that happens, and about continuous improvement, and then creating passion for work and learning, and in the end, excellence. And so, one of the things that we've been trying to do is showcase some of the learning that's happening on our campuses, and I bumped into this learning recently, and I wanted to just very quickly share some of this with you. And I'm gonna give a big shout-out here to Matt, he's a 5th grade science teacher at Grandview Hills Elementary School, and his assistant Zoe, and as we go through here, you'll learn a couple of things about Zoe that really blew me away, for sure. And so, they decided together that they wanted to do hydroponics at Grandview Hills, and so they went away and wrote an $8,000 grant through our Green, our Green Planet, and then secured another 2,000 in campus funds to do this program. And what that meant was that every grade level has access to at least one of these mini-units of hydroponics, and then they put one in the library and also one in the front office. And they have an experimental one, actually, in the principal's office, and that one is growing some very interesting things. So, we will see how that comes out. One of those is African gourds, which, these are little pots this big, those seeds are gonna grow into gourds that are this big? So it'll be fascinating to watch how they, how they manage. This is Zoe here, setting up one of these units, and what you see here is real student empowerment. It's just really fun to watch. And then, not only these mini-units that they have throughout the school, so that all kids in the school can get this hands-on experience and observation of what's happening, but then they have a large one that's set up in the inquiry lab, so that the students can have access to this much bigger version of this, and watch and see the impact that this program can have. And so, this is all about building awareness of hydroponics and the growing methods, and the problems that, that that actually solves in the real world. And so, just incredible to watch. Of course, a reminder that this is an international baccalaureate campus, one of our two elementary campuses at the IB program, and this really resounds off of that inquiry model, that we love to see our students really hands-on with this learning. And so, I had the privilege of hanging out for a little bit with both Matt and Zoe, and Zoe made me eat some of that, and I'm still here, so I can prove that it works. But the, really, the neatest thing about Zoe is that she has office hours.
No.
Because she's an expert in hydroponics, in spelling, and in reading, and so if you need help, you just go hang out with Zoe, and she'll take care of you. And then, what I really love about this is the connections that it has, so all throughout Grandview Hills, you'll hear children talking about the 17 Sustainable Development Goals of the United Nations. These are real, real challenges that we have as a planet, and their hydroponics program zeroes in on, on goal number two, which is zero hunger on the planet, and goal number 11, which are sustainable cities and communities. And these kids can talk to you about the challenges that our planet faces, and how they plan to solve those challenges. And there's a lot of hope for our future. And then it was really fun to be able to connect them to Glenn High School Construction Trades, because Steve Beck out there has built what's in that left-hand side picture, which is a massive frame hydroponic system. And when I visited with him, and it's up in the mezzanine of the, of the construction trades classroom, if you haven't been over there, I encourage you to go see it, but they built this fantastic hydroponic system that is working perfectly, except for the fact that they can't grow anything in it. And so, we have connected Grandview Hills students with Glenn High School students, so that they can teach them how to make sure that they can grow things in their hydroponic system. So a huge shout-out to Matt and Zoe for the incredible work that they're doing at Grandview Hills Elementary School with really deep learning. And so, I'll just finish by saying thank you to our board members again for showing up, for being there. We got paparazzi, we got, we got happiness. We got incredible, real caring and support and love for our children, for our community, for our staff, and I can't thank you enough for the support that you have for this school district. So, thank you, Madam President.
All right, board members, any questions? All right, that'll conclude this agenda item. We'll move on to item 8A1, Equitable Access Formative Review Under Student Experience.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Gearing. My colleague, Mr. Street, and I are here tonight to talk to you about our DIP and Strategic Plan Goal Four, Equitable Access. And so, as you recall, this piece of the updates, or the progress along the way of what we're doing, aligns with our strategic plan, but it also aligns with our superintendent's evaluation system, as well as our community-based accountability system. And so, as you've seen before, we've had two other goals be presented to you, and so now it is Goal Four's turn to let you know kind of where we are in the process and the progress we've been making so far.
Thank you. Good evening. First, I wanna say thank you to the board for all of the support around equitable access. I have been here for a year now. It was last January when I arrived, so very appreciative of the support for the office, the policy, and all of the, just encouragement that I received from meeting with some of the board members, so thank you for that. When we talk about equitable access, one of the things that we wanted to illustrate was, what makes Leander different from other school districts? I think it has to do with, we focus on reflective practice, we focus on data, we focus on enhancing cultural competency. We want every staff member to understand the power that they have to shape lives, and the responsibility we have as reflective practitioners. Also, as we go on this journey of increasing cultural competency and providing more equitable access, we would love this office to work with the board and maybe provide some continued education, or maybe a workshop. We'd love to do that. I would welcome the opportunity to engage all of you, along with some of my colleagues. So, when we look at, I wanna go to the next slide. One of the things also that separates us is, excellence in education need not mean elitism, and equity need not mean mediocrity. There are a lot of people who believe this work, there's a lot of noise about DEI. A lot of people believe this work is about lowering standards. It is not. If we have students who are cruising along at 75,000 feet, our goal is to get them to 80. Those who are at 25,000 feet, our goal is to get them to 30. And we wanna continue to close the delta between our top flyers and those who may be struggling. This is not about lowering standards, because we believe that whatever the standard is, our students can meet that. So I wanna make sure that we understand that. And so, we've gone on a journey, there were four components to achieving equitable access. And the first one is one that we spent a lot of time on. We wanted to move DEI work away from the ideological and aspirational, to focus on those things that we can control. You know, drawn out all the noise and all the drama around the work. Focus on reflective practice, focus on data, focus on those things, that student engagement piece. We wanna focus on things that we can actually quantify. Once we moved past that, the focus was on inclusive and ethical leadership, because leadership matters. We want our leadership team to model what we want our front-line staff to be, inclusive, ethical, calling people into the conversation. Concurrent with that, there was a lot of focus on increasing cultural competency, a lot of article reflections, a lot of workshops, a lot of time spent just meeting with staff and moving people along that continue- and moving people along that continuum of reflective practice. Because in the end, we want the practitioner to focus on those things they can control and to focus on getting better every single day. Because the goal is to be a better practitioner on Monday than you were that previous Friday. That's the goal. And then the last piece, as we went on this journey, was to focus on the equity access data. Which my first meeting was last February when I presented to this board. And it was at that meeting that Trustee Smith brought up the equity access data, which I had not seen at that time, but I saw the next morning. Okay? And I got really smart on that. And then we started talking about how we could use that data in terms of a feeder-pattern approach. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that as we go on. So this gives you a more graphic depiction, excuse me, of my time here. It's hard to believe it's been a year. You know, it's been, it's gone by very fast, but I'm very thankful to be here. So when I got here in January, the focus was on building trust and relationships with the campus leadership team, staff, drowning out all that noise. Then in the summer, we pivoted to ethical and inclusive leadership. A lot of internal consulting. I met with almost every campus. I continued to get calls, requesting presentations, consulting with leaders, article reflections, all leading up to a book study this summer. Every leader in the district went through two workshops leading up to that. There was one which was focused only on leadership, and then the big one was the two-hour workshop focused on ethical and inclusive leadership. Because DEI cannot be achieved unless you have those components as a foundation. And then the last piece, when we got to August, we pivoted to the equity access data. This was extremely important. We had to connect everything, and this is part of what makes Leander different. A lot of school districts talk about DEI, and they leak with a lot of good things. But we connect all the pieces by tying it back to data. You know, we understand there's a balance. Dr. Gearing and I, we had a really good conversation about this this morning. It's all about that balance. You want to be able to develop people, to make people comfortable acknowledging their biases, but we also want to be able to bring the data into it as well, so we can quantify what we're doing. And looking at the feeder-pattern data, this is a graphic depiction of what I'm talking about. Early childhood, elementary, middle school, high school. A seamless conversation going on about a defined universe of students. You know, I would love, I would have loved, when I was a middle school teacher, to have conversations with early childhood about some of the things that they're seeing. I would have loved to have had those conversations at elementary. When I was teaching high school, my first 10 years, I've said this many times, I was not concerned about what was happening at the earlier levels. The feeder-pattern approach is perfect for that level of conversation and collaboration among practitioners. I said this last night at our DEI committee meeting. The feeder-pattern data is at the right level. Campus-level data, sometimes it's too low, you can't really see what's going on. District-level, sometimes student groups get lost. But the feeder-pattern level is the right altitude for us to be looking at this. I talked about my favorite flight when I was traveling for work was from San Angelo to Dallas. It was only about 18,000 feet. High enough for you to see everything, but low enough for you to make out what was happening on the ground. That's the feeder-pattern data for us. And so why look at it? You know, a lot of people have asked me, why look at it this way? I think this walks us through why we're looking at it this way. By examining the data, we can identify any gaps to excellence between student groups and work to reduce those gaps going forward. And then this is a piece that tomorrow, when I meet with the area supers and the chief of schools, I want to start unpacking. Each feeder-pattern was asked to focus on an area or areas in the feeder-pattern data that they wanted to work on to reduce the gaps to excellence. And then by addressing these gaps to excellence, we are achieving and working towards the strategic plan goal of equitable access. So it's all, it's a process, as Dr. Gearing talks about. This is a process that we're trying to overlay here. A lot of groups have seen equity access data. Various, very eclectic groups, starting with my friends, parents, as teachers. I was not prepared for the power of the littles. They completely stripped me, and I can't wait to go back. The principals, on November 1st, we had every leader in this room here looking at the equity access data. And Dr. Grisham and Dr. Benz set up a marvelous mini-workshop where they were able to sit in feeder-patterns and talk about some of the things they were seeing in the data. I delivered a presentation setting it up, and the whole balance of the time left was for them to look at that. The assistant principal saw the data in late November, and then the counselor saw it again in also late November. On March 2nd, I'll be in front of all of the athletic coordinators for the district to talk about how the data is germane to their practice. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Dr. Carleen.
So when we look at that data, when principals were also looking at the data, we had district staff there because we know that this is a collaboration between district and campuses. And so I want to remind us a little bit about what our goal is in here and what our system response measure is. And so our goal is to ensure equitable access to opportunities by eliminating barriers for each and every student. And I really want to highlight that because our system's response is to create and implement processes to not only identify those barriers, but then to eliminate those. And so what you're seeing with looking at this feeder-pattern data is being able to identify where we might have some of those, and then really talking about what are the processes we're doing to help eliminate those. And so one of the ways we've done that, and I say a collective "we" because it has to do with you all, it has to do with our principals, and it has to do with our department team as well, is when we think about pathways within our CTE program. Several years ago, we talk a lot about changing the electives we had at the middle school campuses. But there was a purpose in doing that. We were able to bring some high school-level courses into that middle school level, which allowed our eighth graders to take a course. And so if you look here, I've given you one example. Our multimedia productions is a middle school elective, it can be taken at seventh grade. Our Principals of Arts Audio, Visual and Communications is a high school elective that we've brought to the middle school. So an eighth-grade student could choose to take that if it's at their campus. And that is the foundational course for four different programs of study. So now the student, should they enjoy that, has a choice of four different programs of study that they can then take at the high school level. And then it also allows them to make it all the way to the practicum course, which sometimes there were a couple of barriers that were there beforehand. The other thing I wanted to highlight here is, in conjunction, though, with ProfCom becoming optional, not required, at ninth grade, now if a student doesn't take this, maybe they took something else in eighth grade because they really liked it, but when it takes this principals' course in ninth grade, they still have the room in their schedule to still complete the program of study and get to the practicum course as well. And so it just allows them to have a choice in what fits them more appropriately in their schedule and their interest. And so that was one thing that collectively, collectively as a district, we all worked together to create that. The other things we're doing is, I want to talk a little bit about our advanced programs. And so when we think about our advanced programs, and we think about students being college-ready and post-secondary-ready, there are some things that we really want to consider. We want to consider them, not only that they're aware, that they're eligible, that they're prepared, and that they persist. So aware, that they're even aware of the opportunities out there, that they're eligible to meet those opportunities, that they're prepared to take those courses, whether they're here or post-secondary, and that they can persist and finish what they started. And so when we look at those things, there are ways that we are working with our teams to help with that. So, a couple of things that we have done for those pieces is, when we're looking at our GT programs, the awareness is coming up. And so we have our GT Advisory Committee that is currently meeting. And so from that, we're gathering some data as we look at our services. But our team is also able to gather data about how do we educate parents better on GT and what's available to them, and the process for that. And so they're going to be creating some presentations based on that data that they're getting back. Also, they have really emphasized the referral system for the GT services this year, and with screenings, both in the winter and the spring. So that's been a change. And also have educated their Quest teachers who are helping out on all the campuses, and given them resources to educate the teachers on how do we identify students for screening so that we are creating a process where everyone is educated and many people can refer the students. It just doesn't have to be a parent referral, where people are being able to recognize when they should refer some students. So those are just a couple of the other changes. Some other things with our advanced programs. So if some of you know Ashley Pope, she was a counselor at Glenn, she is now on our advanced programs team. But she helped start the access program, which was a program for Black and African-American students to really help them understand what is available to them. And so part of that learning, and Mr. Street did a presentation for some of them not too long ago, but part of that learning is what courses are available for me, and encouraging them to take some of these advanced courses as well. And so as we're trying to increase access and opportunity, it's really, it's a lot about increasing awareness as well for our students. And then, of course, our AVID program and how we continue to work with that to help our students persist in those courses as well. And then our department collaboration, I put that on there because this has been really important, and I get to sit in a spot where I get to see this a lot. So tonight, we have a dual-language evening event that's going on. We have Steve Clark, our Director of Counseling, who is there to help talk with our parents about the transition. So from 5:00 to 6:00, what that could look like, how they help with that. They also will have our Clay Courier and Cam Payne come in from our early college high school, so parents can become aware of that as an option as well. And then they're talking about partnering with our advanced programs team as well to have them at some of those evenings, so that they can come and educate our parents about what are some of the courses that you can take as you continue to move through our system. And there are some unique courses, when you've been through a dual-language program as far as AP courses, that you might be able to take a little bit earlier when you think about our AP Spanish courses. And so those are just some of the ways our district departments are coming together to work, to communicate with our families, to communicate with our students, and to provide more awareness and access for those, for our kids.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. So looking forward, excuse me, the Office of DEI, I'm proud to say that last night we seated our 25-member advisory group. Very impressed with the group. I thought it was a very productive meeting. Can't wait to go on this journey with this group for two years. This office, in conjunction with everyone else who is involved in equitable access, meeting with the chief of schools once a month, the area superintendents, to find out how this office can support their efforts around this access data and reducing those gaps to excellence. And then in March, leading up to a conversation where I hope to be in front of each feeder-pattern to talk about the progress that's been made, challenges that were unforeseen, and then also to try to lift up some best practices that we can scale up in the fall. Because this is our pilot year, as I said to our two new trustees when I had the privilege of presenting to them. There were three phases that we laid out when I got here. Going back to the old moonshot with the, number one, the mercury capsule, one-man capsule, one-person capsule, make sure we can get up and come back. Value proposition for the office, I think we've done that. This is Project Gemini, where we're field-testing all those things we're going to need as we move to Project Apollo, which is all about not only reducing our gaps to excellence, but also achieving sustainability. So I can't wait to have those conversations in March. And then I have a pilot school that I've been working with. They have just been marvelous to work with. It's Aiken, I don't want to call them out, but Becky and Lauren, just phenomenal to work with. I can't wait to go back. I think it was fate that they're known as the Aviators, and my first love is aviation. So it was, it was just fate. But done a lot of work with them around cultural competency, professional development, and piloting some of the things that we want to scale up in the fall. So, at this point, we're happy to take any questions. I apologize, my voice is going, it's been a long week.
Board members? I have two questions. One is in regards to the GT Advisory Committee. Do we have individuals in the special education community and our staff, sorry, I just totally went blank, special education staff on this committee? Because I'm looking at our TE kids, because this is a population of students who usually, for whatever reason, get pushed to the side, and it is what it is. I'm just making sure that that's represented on there, and we're looking at that process. And then my other question is in regards to Slide 12, and it's new on my mind because I was at high school night last night. You know, we have the different pathways, right? Middle school elective, middle school high school electives. My question is, is, and this got asked last night in the coursebooks, we don't list what grades or what schools that these programs we offer at. And so a big question last night was, why is French not offered at Glenn, but it's in my coursebook? And so we had to have a whole discussion on this. And so I'm just curious, I know as a parent, I would like to know what is offered to my student and to get a better understanding. Also, as a trustee, what programs are we providing access to and what, you know, campuses are not getting that access? So I'm just curious to see if we were planning ever to do that, if it's in the works.
So some of the reasons why it doesn't, we don't always post exactly where it is, is because it's built on course choice, student choice, too. So if we start having some student choice, and we can also find the certified teacher that we can partner with that, then it's something that can be brought into a campus. And so we don't want to automatically say we're going to eliminate it, but we can bring it in. So that's how we put it. I do know our programs of study are listed in, online in the handbook, on the CTE page, and those do list where we have the different courses and where those are available. And so you can find those there. But yes, we had a similar question about the middle school. I can tell you the middle school, we have not identified where all of those are, because it does change a little bit with what they want to offer and bring in on some years, but that is something that we can look into. We had a question about that in Leadership LISD, and so I've brought that back to our team to review.
So, my other question is, so if there's an interest, like what does that parent or student do? Like what does that process look like? So parents out there understand, hey, you know, we've, like we saw tonight, I had no idea Waterpalo was even here until this whole, it happened. So I'm trying to understand, what do parents need to know, or students, they, you know, they advocate for themselves, and they get a group of students, what does that process look like?
So usually, when we're looking at getting a new course, and it's a, or, let me, let me rephrase that, getting an existing course that's offered at a campus, so when it's an existing course that's offered at a campus, usually the students have that course selection sheet, and they can identify the courses that they want on that course selection sheet. And so based on that course selection sheet, that will give our campuses what is of interest for them and how they can then populate their schedule. I will say, though, the one caveat is, if we can find, because we have had some courses where we have not been able to find a teacher who is certified to teach that, and unfortunately, we've had to make a few decisions and find some alternative ways that we can support those students. So I do want to place that out there, that that does sometime happen.
Another question. When we think about the course selection form, what, kind of what I've heard from parents and seen over the years, if it's a course that hasn't traditionally made at its campus, it hasn't been at that campus, then there isn't discussion of that course? And so it's not on people's radar? So they don't select it? And, and so then it's this perpetual, well, we don't offer that science at this campus because there's not a desire for it. But a lot of that stems around, it hasn't been there, so students don't know that it's, they just, it doesn't come as an option. And so I'm wondering what we're doing in those campuses to ensure that we're talking about all of those options and creating, you know, interest, but just really creating exposure to different ones. I mean, I think we see this a lot in, in high schools, and there's disparities in our, you know, our ECODIS campuses of the types of courses, that we're saying, well, there hasn't been a neat, there hasn't been a desire in those campuses. And there's never, we're never going to get that momentum if we don't put it there and we don't create some momentum around it. So I'm wondering, how do we go about, what are our thoughts on that?
I think part of that is a good partnership between our team and our counselors and the team that sits right behind me, our team of area supers, as they support the campuses as well. And I think that's one of the wonderful things about us, is being able to collaborate together to wrap our minds about what are the possibilities that we can be able to provide for these students, and how do we continue to have those conversations with our campuses. And so I don't have an answer for you today on what's the solution for that, but I know it's definitely something that we can work towards to be able to make sure that our kids are aware of what's available.
I have a question for you. How many people are on the DEI Members Board? Like, you have 25, is there a certain reason you settled on 25? Because I remember you coming here before and you had like 84 people sign up.
We did. We had 83 people who expressed interest. But I wanted to seat 25 for this two-year journey so we could treat it not only as an advisory, but also as a professional learning community as well. You know, so 25 gave us the perfect number to have those conversations and to have a group that I can present the work to, and then we could have conversations about amendments that may need to be made.
Well, I understand you may want to have a number you can handle, but there is an interest when you, you know, a bunch of people show up, and to her point, that, you know, how do we get the messaging across? It's basically marketing. I would say- I would say we'd want to have as many people as possible. So even though it might be a bit of a challenge, I would still invite everyone in the community together. So if any of those 84 members want to still join, I would let them join, because you're always going to be, you know, the dog chasing its tail when it's trying to get ahead of itself. You need to go and let the community do it. If they want to do it, bring them in, and then you'll get the marketing, you'll get people. I wouldn't, I wouldn't limit yourself.
If I can address that, since I'm on that committee with Mrs. Maurer, all of our committees have numbers on them. There are limits to all of our committees. They're not unlimited, because if we said, hey, let's create a bond advisory committee, or let's have, you know, whatever committee, and hey, yeah, let's have 2,000 people on that committee, it would limit the ability of that group to be able to have discussions and be able to work. And so there's a lot of people that may want to be on the school board, but you, you limit it to, it's at seven seats. So you have to think about what is our capacity to really be able to have discussion and, and have really genuine discussion and be able to do this in a space. If you create an unlimited amount, you can't do that. None of our committees have an unlimited amount.
I disagree with you. I think the CFAC committee has 80-plus members.
So it's not unlimited, that's how many members are on that committee.
Okay, well, there was 80-plus members that wanted to join this, and if we wanted to, why wouldn't have 25 people in one of the auditoriums we have? So that even if people couldn't necessarily join the talking part of the committee, they can at least see the committee in action. So thus generating a marketing from the people in the audience.
Well, Paul, you have definitely generated some conversation. I'm seeing some light, mics light up, but let's give Dwayne a chance. I want to hear you, you kind of give your answer, and then we'll see if we need more deliberation at that point.
Thank you. One of the things that we talked about is, this is the first year. 25 may not be the right number, we may have to expand it. Also, the people who expressed interest, I've had conversations with some of those individuals, and hopefully we will have an opportunity as we form this group to have individuals come and see what we're doing. We're, we're not out to hide anything. We will post the agenda tomorrow, that's the commitment that I made, the article that we read. But if 25 is not the right number, I've had conversations with Dr. Guerin and Dr. Auduboy, we're open to amending it. This is our first year, so we're trying to make sure we find a manageable number, but, but it's not something that is set in stone at this point, we can always look at it.
I actually am curious, what role, or if any, if our facilities are playing a role in access, if that's information that you look at? Because we do have campuses that are much older, the spaces are different, is that something that is included in the data that y'all are looking at?
In the equity access data, it's not something that's currently included, but it is something that we can work to include.
I, I would, to go off of her, I would like that, because there's programs right now at certain high schools that they cannot have it because it's the physical space. And so there's opportunities that these students are not being exposed to, so I would really like to see what that looks like, especially given some of the conversations we are about to have as a board, what that looks, facilities.
So just so you know, Camille Clay and I, around some of those CTE, we are visiting different campuses to do just that specific walk, right? So what do we have available? What is limiting right now? What might we need? What are additional programs that they're considering at that school? And so what would need to be addressed around the facilities pieces? And so that is something, she and I took a walk earlier this month around Vista. I think Cedar Park is our next school to visit, and so we are specifically looking around some of those things as we think about space availability and programs.
One thing I want to add, I do really appreciate the space that you created for that committee. I do think it's really important, you have a lot of historically marginalized parents and children, who have children, who are historically marginalized, and sometimes they don't always want to participate because they're afraid to participate. And so I do think that we have to be aware of that and create a space where they can come and join in conversation without that fear. So thank you for that.
I would like to, not tonight, but at some point, go back to that foundational discussion, I just want to make sure that's not lost. You're, you're talking about that, I would say, closing the gap, and I'd like to know more about what you're seeing in the data, why you see the data that way, and how do we make it better? Because there is a gap. We've seen that in our district, and so you're starting those discussions, but at some point, I'm hoping we can continue that conversation. Not tonight, but in general. You started off your presentation going back to something that we as a board said was important to us, which was our training. Y'all said that was something that we needed to address. We, we did have one training session, Dwayne's here offering to do either a workshop or some sort of training. Board members, I just need some type of consensus or head nod. Okay? All right, so if you will just continue then, reach out with Cindy, let us know what type of format you think works best. Remember, if there's a quorum of the board, it has to be, it has to be an open meeting type of situation, and I don't know if you can get a quorum of the board, because they're all going in so many different directions, you might need to look at something that's more of a two or three board members. Probably actually be able, we could maybe fit that in our schedule. So, all right. Board members, anything else? Okay. All right, thank you so much, Dwayne. Board members, it is 8:26. I'm going to give us a five-minute break, and before we get that five-minute break, let me tell you how the breakdown is, because I see my audience out there love it. I gave Cindy an estimated time on when we thought our speakers would be invited to speak. Board members, please also be aware of this. 8:30 is going to be our next one with internal audit, we're going to be a little off on time. 9 o'clock for our CFAC presentation, we're going to move around some of our agenda items so we can get our guest speakers in here, and 9:45 for a resolution for defisence. That's item 8C2. So let's see what we can do. Again, deliberation, five minutes, we'll come back.
Board members, it is eight thirty-four. Let's come back into open session. Board members? Eight thirty-four. We are going back into open session. The next item in front of us is our governance. B1, Governance: Internal Audit Update. For our audience and our board members, I will point out that this is an internal audit update. You'll notice later in the meeting, maybe later tonight or early in the morning, we'll be talking about an external audit update, our external auditor approval. That is not the same thing as this topic discussion. This is about our internal audit. So, I will now move to my notes. First of all, board members, you all may have seen the information. Helene's retirement event that is coming up next week. Please mark your calendars if you're able to attend. We are very sorry to see Helene go. She has been in our district for a very long time. She has done a tremendous job for audit, but she has resigned. And so now we're here today to talk about what is it? And continue the discussions that the board started some time ago of how do we still stay fiscally responsible? Ensure efficient, effective operations? And continuously improve our systems as we continue to grow. One of the areas that we have been discussing in this is with audit service with Helene's departure. It creates an opportunity for the board to discuss kind of what do we want audit to look like going forward? One of those things that we talked about is we have currently two auditor liaisons. And as we've been in discussions, the thought is about having an audit committee. What that might look like and those next steps. Anna and Shadé are currently our auditor liaison. They've worked longer on this process. So I would just like to invite them to share their thoughts with the board at this time of kind of what these next steps and the future for LISD and this department looks like.
So what I'm looking for tonight is really kind of what is the board feedback from y'all? There's two in my mind, Shadé can correct me, directions I feel like we can go. But I think it's important that we get board input because this is truly a change in our system, a good one. Just because what we're trying to do is build a department that's effective and efficient. We're a big district. We want to know what's going on. We want to make sure that our taxpayers were being, you know, great with our taxpayer dollars. And some of this information that I have seen in this search is audit committees. And that is still a board committee. Now, this is where I kind of need y'all's input. What does this committee look like? Does it have just two liaisons like what Shadé and I are? Does it have three board members? Is the CFO part of this? What does this look like? And that's what I'm kind of needing from y'all, a direction on what is that? How can we put together a strong lasting committee that is going to be sustainable? That's also going to help make this department efficient and more effective going forward? So, I know that's not really, I don't really have a direction because I want y'all to tell me the direction we need to go.
Well, and good news, we also have some guests here this evening that'll also kind of walk us through some next steps. But Shadé, kind of thinking about the discussions you and Anna have had about vision, like what are some of the?
So, this whole process started, I guess, the first half of last year when we were researching what other school districts are doing with respect to internal audit. And we found an opportunity to really do a more robust deep dive into different areas of the district. And there were certain reports that we thought would be, it would be interesting for us to have. And it's all about being, are we being efficient? Are we being effective in our operations? And are there best practices that we can keep and memorialize in these reports? And are there opportunities for improvement? If we have four hundred million dollars flowing through the budget. And yes, we do have the accounting audit, but this is different from the accounting audit. This is more operational. And so, looking at those reports, a lot of those reports are highly specialized and need very specialized talent to do it or knowledge to do it. And we looked at what some other school districts are doing. Some are fully outsourced in their internal audit departments. Some have a huge internal audit department with all those specialties, up to twenty was one that I saw, which we're not looking to do. And there is some that I've also learned that there are some that have two people that are doing all of these. But I like the idea of having those, taking advantage of that specialized knowledge. I've seen some of those reports. They're really extensive in what they cover. And because they are very specialized, they know how to really come in, ask the questions, get what they need without too much disruption, and just put together what they need to do. And let's see. So, some of these school boards that we've seen do about, maybe do about three a year, anywhere from two to four a year, and make sure that they're not tapping the same departments so that they're not overtasking people who have their daily jobs to do. And I just thought that this is just a wonderful opportunity for us to really do a deep dive into some of these areas. We've seen like when the transportation audit was done, I mean, that revealed things that changed a lot of, so we know what audits can do. And so, it's really just a matter of trying to do more specialized audits.
I think also just to add to Shadé, we really wanted to have this conversation in the public for full transparency. I mean, this is a department that we, this is a very important department for our district. And one of the things we've talked about is clear transparency in this. And if you notice some of these districts that Shadé was talking about, their audit reports, not security guys, but audit reports are posted online. So there's nothing to hide. Our community sees what's being audited. They see what we're working on and what we need to improve. And that's kind of like, at least from, I'm assuming, this is the kind of direction I would like to see this board go. Everything out in the open, obviously not security things that are going to harm our students and schools. But we've got nothing to hide. Let's put it out there. Let's show the community that we are willing to make this a more efficient, effective department. And what do we need to do?
Okay. All right, so when, to give just a sense of perspective. When Helene was, started with the district, we had less than half the schools we have right now. The district has seen a momentous growth. And so, that discussion of like, okay, what does the next step look like? There could, there could be some really good things that we could think of as a board. What I don't want you to think is, oh my goodness, I didn't come with notes. Of course not. This was meant to be kind of a discussion item. And so, here's the things that are possible things you could think about. Outsourcing audit services for the district. Rewriting policy to ensure accountability if we end up doing outsources. And the creation of an internal audit committee, something more formalized in the process. What that looks like and all those next steps, we don't need to figure that out right now. Alls we wanted to do was kind of give you some thoughts. And then we'll present something at the next board meeting. So this isn't to get a lot of action on tonight. But we do have a guest, Dr. Charles Dupree, who's here. And he has had experience as a superintendent in the district that actually transitioned from internal to external audit services. So we are honored and would like to ask Dr. Dupree if he wants to just come up and answer any questions that the board might have about any of the stuff that we've discussed. And also your questions, we'll be taking notes so that audit liaisons can kind of help build what those items need to look like for action at our next meeting.
I wonder if it would be helpful if Dr. Dupree could introduce himself and just give us a little bit of his background so that we can understand and the community can understand the expertise that he brings to the table.
Okay, green light, there we go. Well, good evening. It's good to be here. I appreciate you, Madam President, Mr. Superintendent and Board. Thank you for joining, for inviting me to be here this evening. Just to give you a little background, as you mentioned, she mentioned that I was superintendent for fifteen years in two large districts in Texas. Before coming to education, however, I am a certified public accountant. I worked for Arthur Andersen and Company for a few years before I went into the oil and gas industry as an accountant. And actually started my career in public education as an internal auditor. And served in that role before transitioning into the budget officer and CFO role and ultimately deputy superintendent and superintendent. So I do have a pretty broad experience and knowledge about this topic. In both districts where I've worked, the board elected to transition to a fully outsourced model. So, I can certainly speak to the pros, cons, a lot of things you might want to think about as you process through this decision.
I've heard some of the companies that do the external auditing, they'll do it in an efficiency way where they won't get paid unless they can actually find ways to save you money. Have you had any experiences with that? Did it work out or, you know, positive negatives?
So, yes, we actually, I have, I'm familiar and have done those audits in organizations where I've worked. However, I would not consider that a true internal audit. Internal audit is intended to come in and test the functioning of a department against the law and the board policy and efficiency and effective, effective best practices that are well documented. So it's not ever in a true internal audit about trying to force efficiencies to prove the profit of the organization doing the audit, but to give the organization that's being audited a continuous improvement tool that allows them to have conversations among the governing body, accountability to the superintendent and the staff who lead the division for continuously studying and taking action to improve practices of that division.
Have the external, excuse me, audit companies that you've worked with, what's the, what's the kind of range of things? I know that Anna and Shadé have done some cursory searches and what we're thinking of, you know, big rocks, you know, construction, things like that. You know, in the past, with Helene, we've gotten a lot of, you know, campus reports and things like that. But we're talking, you know, we've had some big projects and we want to make sure that we're doing everything correctly. So what is your experience with that? How, what's the, the range of, say, options?
So I, so I'll speak to two aspects of what you mentioned. So first of all, the Activity Fund Audit, the Campus Audits, you can't ever set those aside because there's a lot of political and just risk around those. Even if it's a hundred dollars stolen, it gets in the media. That's a big deal that erodes trust. So you always want a part of your staff, and in the organizations where I have worked, it was a member of the accounting staff that still had scheduled and routine reviews and audits of what's going on at that level, just so you do have a handle. And there's always an investigation process that can be enacted immediately if there's any concern that anything impropriety is going on at that level. When, the firms that I have worked with have consistently, their approach is they come in and they work with the, with the board's audit committee. They don't tell you what to do or how to do it. They start at the very beginning by doing what they call a risk assessment. They come into the organization and they look at every function of the organization. And then they present to the audit committee what they would call the universe of all possible audits that could be conducted. And as you know, there are certain audits that are very high risk. There are certain things that have a lot of money. If you're looking at your PMS reporting on your ADA and how you track that, that's a high risk because it's your funding source. There's many other things like construction management, for example. There's financial risk, but there's also effectiveness and efficiency risk and procedural risks that are in place. So, what they do is they then rate all of the audits, all the possible audits, and they, from one to however many in order of risk. And there are going to be some that are very high risk, some that are very low risk. And then they work with the board to determine with your committee how you would like to proceed. And they may choose to do one major high risk in a year and then a lower and a medium risk just to manage your costs and to manage the load on staff. Or they may choose to do one big high risk audit in the spring and another high risk in the fall. It's really up to your committee and that's usually, the committee would typically have at least three board members. The superintendent would be a non-voting and non, you know, but a participating member. And typically I would have the CFO there as well. And then any, and any leader who's going to be engaged with an upcoming audit. But the objective is for the board's committee to say, you know, we see all these things. Thank you firm for sharing this with us. And these are the things we want to tackle first.
Have you found that it is more, I don't know if efficient is the right word, but especially for those big, as Christine said, the big rocks like construction where you have so many different specialized pieces? Is it better in those cases to use like Shadé is talking about people that have actual knowledge of those specialized processes?
Yes, ma'am. That's one of the true benefits I have found with outsourcing. Because if you hire a well-qualified firm with deep resources, when you're doing something in construction, they'll bring in individuals with that specific background. If you're doing an instructional-based audit, they'll bring in individuals with that specific background. And having been an internal auditor in a large district, you, no large district unless you really have twenty to thirty or more staff members in that department, you'll never be able to have the depth of knowledge and expertise to audit at the level you really need for true governance, in my perspective.
And in these districts that you've been at, who manages those outsourced audits? Which department or which employees?
So it varies. Typically, the superintendent is the primary liaison with the board's committee, as he is in many of your committees. In my previous district, one of them, I had a chief of staff. And that individual always sat with me in the audit committee meetings because there is this logistical elements that have to take place. You know, when, once the committee makes the decision, then the audit firm will work through the superintendent and the chief of staff to work with the other leaders to do the data requests, to schedule interviews and do all of those things. So, you know, it would be up to your, your organization to determine where that fits best in your structure. But it, but it could be anybody that the superintendent deems appropriate to be, to lead that. Because it's not just conducting the audit, it's also the follow-through on the audits. Because once you, once the report is presented, there's going to be findings. And in a productive system that achieves your real goals, there's also an accountability system for staff and the superintendent to be held accountable to the committee to also follow through on each of the findings, to resolve it in a meaningful way that addresses what was reported in the audit.
Was there ever specific staff that were assigned, like, or the employed to just process or be that liaison or the kind of, I guess, the administrator of those outsourced audits? Or did it always happen with existing staff?
We always did it with existing staff because it's really not a full-time job. I mean, it is a part, it's a, it's a fractional part of a job and it's important. But with that, just managing two or three audits a year from that level for a staff person would not because the audit firm is doing all the work. There's key points to schedule data requests, scheduling interviews and those kinds of things. But beyond that, the auditors are doing the work off-site. And then they engage to provide draft reports through the liaison. And the board really doesn't even see any of those draft reports and a lot of that. They get updates along the way typically. But again, I'm, the thing I'm going to keep reinforcing is your committee determines your process and how you want to handle it. There's no set way at all.
And then you mentioned the firm coming in to do a risk assessment. And I'm stepping back a little bit, is the process of choosing that firm, the RFP or RFQ process, who puts together that request to send out? And what kind of timeframe are we looking at in terms of responses?
Well, again, I think it's your committee's decision on how to handle that. Since, since audit reports directly to the board and ideally through an audit committee, from my perspective and from my experience, you would leverage the expertise of your staff to develop an RFQ for the committee to review before it is advertised. And then once the committee gives any feedback and any potential revisions, then it would be released and staff would do their job to manage the collection of proposals, get all of that organized for you. And then the committee would review and score and do all of that selection process to determine which organizations you would want to work with. So that staff is purely administrative, no voice in the decision, no scoring, none of that. Just to keep it a very independent process under the pure supervision of the board committee. You mentioned timeline. And again, most, this is where your staff could be most beneficial. In my experience, you'll often advertise things at least four to six weeks. So it's a process. Once you post and advertise, you'll collect the proposals by the, on the deadline. That would all be packaged up for the committee to review, have a meeting to score and do all of that work. So it would probably be at least a two and a half to three month process from beginning to end as you engage with staff and committee to go through that process.
Thanks.
Could you clarify in that process whether they'd be looking for one outside firm to work with or multiple, as we do with architects, for instance?
Well, again, it's totally your committee's choice. I've worked in both environments. In one district, we had one firm at a time. In another district, we had multiple firms. And based on their availability, their expertise in certain areas, you might assign an audit based on, you know, their skill set. So it's really up to your, you can make that decision once you get all the proposals in. You don't have to go into the procurement process, determine whether you're going to hire one or more. You could do an RFQ. And then as you really consider all the qualifications, you could say, you know what, here's three firms. They're very different, all strong, but, or there's two firms or four, whatever the committee deems as they go through that process.
Do you feel it's beneficial to have the CFO as a permanent member of that audit committee? Or is it better just to consult as you need?
Well, my experience has been the CFO, from the audit committee perspective, because several of the major departments report through the CFO. The CFO, the COO, all of those individuals, they rotate in and out, not as members of the committee, but when they're being audited. So typically, the superintendent and the board would be the committee that would work with the auditors. But you would bring in your cabinet members over the audited areas as necessary.
So for instance, if they were auditing construction services, then you would want your CFO there to be able to answer those questions and to work closely with the committee?
That kind of, if you don't mind, that kind of comes to the, what I call the no surprise rule. Because one of, one of the, the most effective aspect of the program that I found is both boards that I have worked with came to the table with an outsourced audit mindset of it is truly continuous improvement. They very vocally and frequently in public at the board meetings when they were dealing with audit said, this is continuous improvement. It is not gotcha. It's not blame and shame. It's not pointing out the mistakes and flaws of our work. There's no public shaming of what happened. It's honest, direct conversation about, about the reality. Because there's always findings. And I'm going to tell you, your staff will always be frustrated with the findings because it's like, oh, I thought everything was going really well. And then the auditors are going to find something that they're going to, that they're going to put in their report and then it'll be read publicly. But as long as the board continues to have an attitude of this is about getting better every day, it's about continuous improvement, and yes, we're going to have accountability for it. And we're going to expect the superintendent to hold the CFO or the COO, whoever accountable, for remedying these issues, then it's a very healthy, very healthy process. The other thing I would add is, is the staff always has a voice in the process. So when the auditor completes the report, in my experience, they sent it to the superintendent. The superintendent would send, would send it to the chief over the area that was audited and say, provide a written response to each of these items. So when the board received the audit report in finality, it was the auditor's findings with the staff response. Sometimes there was a disagreement, but the staff said, we don't agree with this. If staff did not agree, often the auditors would try to resolve it before it went to the committee to see is there, was there some data missing? Was there something we didn't see or understand properly? Because the auditors I worked with never wanted to report something that wasn't a hundred percent accurate. But sometimes the board did get reports that said, staff does not support this and here's why. There may be fiscal limitations, staffing limitations, that are preventing staff from enacting the truly best practice. And so the board was able to see staff's perspective. But often the staff would say, we agree. We will address this, you know, by the end of, you know, 2024. We're going to give ourselves a fourteen or eighteen month runway to do the work to resolve it. And then part of the staff liaison's responsibility was to monitor and track is that department following through and doing what they need to do? Because there's also then quarterly, we had quarterly responses to the committee to say, we're, here's where we are in this process. So you're doing the audit, but you're also having the accountability follow-up to the board for each of the audits that you've completed.
All right, so if I don't hear any objections from the board, I'll work with audit liaisons to draft some language. You're going to see something as you'll hear the first suggestion, audit committee. So you'll see some language there and whatever else, audit liaisons, whatever we determine, kind of talk about what needs to be on the agenda, it'll be there. And then we'll have those discussions at our next meeting. All right.
Just one thing, I guess, board members, if there's anything else, because I'm a process thinker afterwards, can y'all send to Cindy if y'all have any comments or suggestions, please? Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, Dr. Dupree, for being here.
Thank you so much.
And thank you, audit liaisons. Y'all have done a tremendous amount of work and a lot of meeting, and thank y'all. All right. We're, board, we're gonna go a little bit out of order on the agenda with your permission, because we have guests here, and our guests are volunteers in our community, so we want them up here. So we're gonna go ahead and move down to discussion, action item, operations, discussion of the Citizens Facility Advisory Committee recommendations.
Madam President, board members, Dr. Gearing, tonight, we have the three co-chairs of the steering committee that has done a tremendous amount of work and has a report for you and to present a list of recommendations. I do want to say the steering committee has done a fantastic job of working long hours in a short time, but put it forth a great amount of effort. And I think you'll be proud of what they have to present. So I'll turn it over to Clint Pruitt. And why don't y'all just introduce yourselves?
I'm Clint Pruitt.
Matt Ormiston.
Kara On.
Okay. Thank you, Jimmy, and also for all of the, Jimmy and the, and the staff's hard work throughout the, the process and providing information and turning in for, we were meeting, you know, every night or every other night, and they were turning over massive amounts of, of information to help us get to this point. But also wanted to thank you, Madam President, and Dr. Gearing, and the Board of Trustees for having us here tonight to make this recommendation. So I'm gonna start out and do a, kind of a high-level overview of the first few slides in this presentation. And then, we'll get into the, the meat of the presentation with the committee's work and our recommendation. So just to start with, growth trends and kind of just an overview of, of the district. You know, obviously, it's 48 schools, 200 square miles. The district's added over 1,400 students from October of last year to October of this year. And during that time, added 82 jobs. And going back and looking kind of at a, at a five-year snapshot, 2016, 17, had just over 37,000 students. And current year, obviously, or since the 2017 bond, have added over 4,700 students. And then, looking forward, over the next 10 years, the demographer anticipates over 21,000 new homes and over 8,400 new students. And then, just in terms of the, the background and how we got here tonight for this CFAC and steering committee work, wanna stop and, and say thank you to the, those groups listed up there, the members of the steering committee. There were 14 of us. And then, the, the six subcommittees, there were a total of 150 citizens that participated in those subcommittees. So definitely, a lot of, a lot of hours, going back to last fall and the subcommittees and all their work, and then leading into the work that the steering committee has done over the last, over the past few weeks. And then, just looking back at the 2021 bond, Proposition A, 727 million, that narrowly failed. Proposition B, for 33.3 million in technology replacements that passed. And then Proposition C, for 11.7 million in lighting and sound upgrades for the high school performing arts, art centers, that also failed. And disclaimer here, I'm, I'm an operations guy. But, but we did receive a presentation from the district CFO, Peter, Peter Pape, on, just kind of giving us a high-level view on the district's, the district tax rate and the INS and, and maintenance and operations portions of that. And then, a presentation on debt management and debt capacity. And so, you know, one of the things that we, we, in part of our work is, if we're considering a bond program, is, is, you know, what is the district's debt capacity? And what does that look like going out over, over several years? And so, one of the things that, that, you know, he presented us is the, the property value and property value growth in the district. And even looking at it from a conservative standpoint over the next several years, that there's debt capacity for somewhere between 900 million and 1.4 billion over the next five to seven years. And then, the, the next couple of points there, I think, are very important in terms of the, the prudent fiscal management of this board and the administration, and the efforts in reducing the overall cab or capital appreciation bond in the debt portfolio by, to 25% by 2030. And y'all are certainly on track to do that from the information that we received. And then the additional defecence, 44 million in, in debt over the next three years. And then, just kind of an outline of the, of the process from, from January, early January, looking out to a potential calling of a May bond election, which the deadline for that is, is February 17th. So the steering committee met four or five times? I guess, five times if you count the subcommittee presentations on January 3rd. So our work was really that early January, about a week and a half period where we met five times. I think the average meetings were somewhere between three to four hours. So definitely spent a lot of time together in a, in a relatively short period of time. We provided a, a brief update to the board on January 12th. Obviously, we're here tonight with the steering committee's recommendation. And then, I think there's a couple of, or there's an optional community survey that's, or a potential community survey going out late January to early February. And then, the board has a scheduled meeting for February 9th. And then, I think there's some potential for some, some, some special call meetings in there, if that becomes necessary. And then, the deadline of February 17th to call for a May election. And then, with that, I think is where we will move into the, the, the meat of the presentation and the, the committee's work and how we arrived at the recommendation that we bring forward tonight.
It was a four-part process that started with the subcommittees. There were the different subcommittees for the high school, middle school, elementary, ancillary, ancillary IT. And they met starting in September through December. They went toward the facilities. They talked to different staff and community members about the different projects that were on there. And they came up with a three-tier system that they presented to us.
And, and then, as I had mentioned before, we, we did the, the majority of our work in that brief two-week period from January 4th through the, through the 16th. And we, the, the initial recommendations that we received from the subcommittees, those tier-one, or those tier-one projects added up to a total of 400 and, almost $450 million. And kind of the first thing that we did is, and Matt's gonna go into a more detailed description of the, all the work that the committee did. But kind of the first thing that we did at our, our first meeting was looking at those almost $450 million in projects. We went through and did a first pass and identified almost $120 million in those priority-one projects that we all felt, you know, absolutely needed to go through and didn't need further discussion. And then, we went through a process where we, I think we identified about 65 projects that went into a parking lot that we then went through detail, so.
Right. And I'm gonna, I've got a couple pages here to, to kind of go through that, that process of that, that we undertook to evaluate the, the parking lot projects. And hopefully, I kind of drown you with information. I know, Madam President, that you expected to hear more about the process. And so hopefully, I can answer all of your questions through this, the next, hopefully only five minutes or so. I guess, overall, I, I'll, you know, and speaking on behalf of the committee, we feel that the process that we undertook, it was fair. It was representative of the community at large. And, you know, again, I think, as Clint mentioned, 150 individuals comprised those subcommittees. So that's a, that's a pretty broad representation. So I feel like we have, we have a very representative recommendation here as far as the needs for the district. Further, you know, we had some pretty robust discussion. I mean, we had two meetings that went until, up till 11 o'clock at night up here. You know, there was, there was a lot of really good discussion among the, the steering committee members. And, and I feel like our viewpoints were, I mean, the steering committee itself, even though it was only 14 people, it was a very diverse group, diverse from geography. I mean, we had people from north, central, south, all the, all the various feeder patterns, really, throughout the district. Diverse from, you know, age and stage in life. I mean, we had steering committee members that had no children in the district, steering committee members that had children that were, you know, have graduated and moved on, or, or, you know, maybe one or two still in high school. Committee members such as myself were, you know, I'm, I'm gonna have a child in LISD for at least another 13 years. And as well as, you know, Kara. I mean, Kara's gonna be, you know, her children are gonna be in LISD for the better part of the next two decades. So, I mean, so, you know, I, I felt like we had a really good cross-section of, of the community represented there. You know, so again, you know, everybody had an opportunity to, to, to voice their opinions on, on items. You know, again, there were, there were a lot of good takeaways. I learned a lot from my committee members. And, and you know, and I think that the recommendation that we're gonna present to you tonight will, will show all the hard work that, that, that all the subcommittees and the, and the steering committee put in. So this process, we, we, you know, Clint mentioned, we took the tier-one items. We looked at those, we identified about 120 million or so. Said, "Look, we, we all agree on this. We're not even gonna discuss these further." And then, we, anything that we wanted to ask additional questions of district personnel, or we wanted to kind of maybe debate amongst ourselves, we, we put them into this parking lot. And so, and so this parking lot included all the remaining tier-one items and then several of the tier-two projects as well. Ultimately, what we decided to do, after we had discussed and debated and gathered all the information that we felt we needed to, to really kind of nail down what are our priorities here, we undertook a hot-dodding process. Or basically, everybody received 34 votes, right? 34 stickers. You could put any combination of any votes of your 34 stickers on any combination of projects. So if you wanted to put all 34 on, you know, new sinks for, for four or five of the elementary schools, you could have done that. You know, so, or you could spread it out. Or, you know, if you had different categories of projects that you felt strongly about, you could put three or four on those. So again, so that way, we could kind of get some kind of a stratification, right? We'd be able to see kind of where the, where the committee felt the priority should be. So once we did that, we, we went through, we counted up all the votes, and we just put them in descending order from the highest number of votes to the lowest number of votes. And, and you could see some breaks, you know, and you kind of had an idea of kind of where, you know, our, our priorities were becoming, you know, a little bit clearer. We were starting to really kind of focus in on what, what we, what, what was gonna make the cut, so to speak. Our next step was then to, everybody took a sticky note, and it was a pretty simple question. What, what size of a bond, you know, based off of our interaction with our community members and our experiences, both on the committee and just elsewhere, what kind, what size of a bond do you think is passable? Given, now that we know kind of where our priorities are? And so, everybody wrote those down. They were, they were collected. They were tallied, put on the screen. And, you know, even, you know, we, we went through, we ran, did an average, did a median, and that came in pretty roughly about the same number. We dropped the highest and the lowest. That again, came in, you know, not substantially different than, than the, than what we had with taking into consideration all the numbers. And we kind of used that as a guidance amount to say, to say, okay, well, you know, this, this seems about to be the amount that we feel is reflective of what we think the community would find acceptable. And so, we took that $120 million worth of projects at the very top. And then, the, the highest vote-getters, we just ran a running tally. And whenever we hit that number, that guidance number, that's where we stopped. And that, that guidance number fell within, in the middle of a tier of, of certain projects. It all, all received the same votes. So again, since they weren't in any kind of particular order, we said, okay, all the projects in that, in that tier should also be included. And so, that's where we, we came up with the lower end of our, our recommendation there. After going through that, we then kind of took a step back and said, okay, what does this look like relative to the charge that we were given as a steering committee? And, and you know, you know, we were given kind of a, we did kind of have to thread a needle. I mean, we're, we're trying to balance a lot of different competing interests, a lot of difficult challenges that, that district personnel have, you know, explained to us. And, and so, you know, we, we tried to take, all right, the, the number that we came up with there and the projects there. And we looked at it from, you know, a real high level and said, okay, how does this also fit into the long-range plan of the board? And again, you know, that, you know, that's your province, right? You, you guys know the long-range plan better than, than we do. So that's where we decided to come up with a range to throw, we threw in an extra amount in there to account for maybe some, to, I guess, to kind of give a little flexibility. Again, not that you guys are not beholden to the number that we, we put out there. We recommend, understand that completely. But also didn't want to throw out just one single number and then, you know, kind of have an anchoring effect, right? That, oh, well, y'all really have to stay close to that, or, or what, whatnot. So we wanted to throw in a range just to allow, you know, I guess, to, to kind of say, hey, look, we think there are probably some other items, particularly in the long-range plan, that, that, you know, would be useful for the district. And so, that's where we decided to come up with the range that, that we're gonna, we're gonna see here in a minute.
That brings us to tonight. This is the culmination of the work that the, the subcommittees and the steering committee have done. We are going to present to you the recommendation that we've brought you. And I think that as you see it, you'll kind of see one of the biggest priorities is, for at least the steering committee, was making sure that we're maintaining our buildings and that we're not falling behind on maintenance of those, as well as making sure that we're not falling behind on building, necessary buildings, so that we don't have overcrowded schools.
All right. And with that, we'll, we'll move on to the recommendation. And we'll start with just the, the high overview. And then, we'll go through, you know, high school, middle school, elementary, each of the six subcommittees to see, or each of those sub-areas to see what, you know, what projects the steering committee is recommending from each of those six areas. And so, as Matt mentioned, the steering committee is recommending a range between $563,549,877 and $601 million. And the way that kind of breaks down in terms of renovations and repairs, and growth and safety, and so it's right at just, you know, 50% renovations and repairs projects, just over 40% in growth projects, and, and 6% in, in safety projects. And then, to go along with the, the recommendation and the, and the dollar amount and the project recommendations, one of the things that the committee discussed in detail and voted on at our last meeting is that part of our recommendation is the, that this recommendation is, is for a, a May 2023 bond, that the, that the board called for a May 2023 bond, is what this recommendation is for. We had a lengthy discussion at our last meeting, took a vote, and had a fairly significant majority result calling for that May election. Moving on to high school.
Okay. This is an itemization of the items included in the the steering committee's recommendation for the high school projects. You'll see in there some some roof repairs that we understand are desperately needed at Leander and Cedar Park High School. There's an item there for improvements over at Vista Ridge High School, there at the the intersection leading into that high school. We understand that to involve additional and other, you know, lanes of ingress and egress into that into that campus. There is money there for bollards to go to 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 provide safety there at Leander High School with respect to the the band practice field, just to kind of separate vehicular traffic from 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 the band members that are practicing there. And then, these next two items, you've got Cedar Park High School modernization update and Vista Ridge High School modernization update. A modernization update, you're going to see several of these, and they're going to be some of the larger ticket items in here. The way that we understand a modernization update to be to be is is it go in about, it's our understanding that our campuses are designed to have these roughly every 20 years. All the campuses that are up here are beyond the 20 years. Some of them, I think, 26, 27 years overdue for these modernizations. Essentially, what it is, it's kind of a top-down remodel effectively. You're going to go through, it's paint, it's carpet, it's flooring, ceilings, lights, HVAC, and furniture replacement for these campuses. And so, these these amounts up here, it's based off of square footage. And so, and it's based off of the history of the district in in undertaking several of these types of projects. Also for, you'll see some in the elementary schools in a little while, the ones at the elementary school also include a replacement of the playground equipment. So, and then, you know, again, as they get into these projects, they'll, you know, they'll tweak the numbers a little more. But those were the two two big-ticket items there on the high school needs. And then, there you see money for an attendance window at New Hope High School. That's kind of a a safety and an ingress egress issue at that facility. Then there's some money here for an 18-plus transition services facility. It was explained to us and that currently the 18-plus transition services is housed in portables at Cedar Park High School, and that really for the delivery of those services to 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 the 18-plus students, really for it to be effective, you know, it it makes sense for those individuals to be, you know, located at kind of their own place, right? They've they've graduated high school, but, you know, it's got to be a little confusing. They're going back to a high school, right? So, this would be for the construction of a of a facility dedicated just to providing 18-plus transition services. Then we have turf for baseball and softball fields at the at the five high schools that do not currently have it. You know, with, you know, and looking at this, I mean, there were a lot of, there was a lot of discussion around this item. You know, with the water issues that we had, and we're going to continue to have, I mean, if you've tried to play baseball on a on a parched field, I mean, it's, you know, it does kind of bleed into a kind of a safety issue. And so, that's where, you know, both not having to water, turf has got a lot less maintenance costs. You know, it's it's a it's a higher upfront cost, but over the long term, a lot less maintenance. We felt like that was a that was a project that that needed to come in. Next, we also have money for a new early college high school. There's a lot of discussion around, you know, when employers are looking at locating facilities in and around a school district, that this is something that that they're looking for for your 21st century school districts. And so, this was this was an item that that we felt warranted inclusion on this this recommendation. And then lastly here, you'll see a school of choice facility for the north part of the district. And then you see in the parenthetical, design only. The design-only designation is that that's the amount of money that the district feels is necessary to get construction-ready documents. So, in other words, when, you know, I mean, if we if we, you know, for some reason, the board decided tonight to go ahead and build a new school, it takes a long, there's a lead-up time to get to do that. So, what this does is this puts aside money to to be able to, and you're going to see a few design-only items in here. And so, the design-only items get us to construction-ready documents so that whenever we are ready to 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 push forward and build a new that new facility, you can hit the ground running and not have that, you know, nine, 12, 18 months sometime lead-up time.
For the middle school, we're looking at a modernization for Running Brushy Middle School, which again includes things like paint, furniture, carpet, HVAC. Furniture, I believe, is a new thing that's been included in modernization updates. So, a lot of these older schools like Running Brushy have never had new furniture. And a lot of times when you go into these older schools, their library tables are falling apart, and and they just have a lot of mismatched furniture, furniture that's not really functioning very well. And so, we felt like that was a really important part of that modernization update. Canyon Ridge Middle School needs some heat recovery units. Canyon Ridge and Running Brushy Middle School, they are a little bit different in how their their competition fields are used, where they have Canyon Ridge, who is, they don't use Van de Grifts. And so, they compete on their own field. And then Running Brushy, because Leander's football field is used by Glenn, Rouse, and Leander. A lot of times, you will see some of their JV and sub-varsity sports playing on Running Brushy's field. And so, it gets a lot of use, and it it's not incredibly safe the way it is right now. And so, that's why we added that. And then for Canyon Ridge and Henry Middle School, we have the design only for their modernization update, because they're not quite due for their modernization update. But whenever there is another bond, they will be. And so, that would allow them to be able to hit the ground running.
All right. Moving on to the elementary needs, starting out with modernization updates at Baghdad and Noman Elementary. And I think those are a couple of those campuses that fall into the, you know, five to seven year, probably five to seven years overdue from when they were originally planned. And so, those are definitely a very high priority. Elementary School number 31, roads for Elementary School number 30, student sinks at Whitestone, Fobian, Cypress, Mason, and Black House Creek Elementary School, and then Elementary School number 32.
All right. And then moving on down the line, we have, here are the security subcommittee needs that we determined should be included in the recommendation. These first four items here, these are all items that are going to be required under the the new TEA rules that I believe should be going final. If they haven't gone final, they're going to be going final pretty soon. On these items, you know, the legislature may or may not, you know, with the with the surplus, they may or may not reimburse school districts. We don't know. But they're items that are going to be required to be be implemented, or at least under contract, be implemented within the next within the next year. So, so those items are reflected there. You've got half a million there for cybersecurity, for content, content filters. What what those are, I mean, I mean, well, I think I think everybody knows what it what it does. But apparently, the the licenses on those are are up, and and it's it's time to get, time to renew, renew the licenses on those. And then, the last couple of items here, additional cybersecurity items, network firewalls, that's going to be for, I believe, for both hardware and software. A lot of the the hardware, I guess, is is kind of end-of-life or out of warranty already. And so, you know, there's there's a risk there that if some of that stuff fails, your your network's going to be at at risk. So, that, along with the recovery, recovery appliances, were the last two items from the security subcommittee that we we voted to include.
For information technology, the network refresh and upgrades, I believe that is the cabling that the squirrels like to eat. The server and storage replacement, student and staff ref, or device refresh, those have about a three-to-five-year lifespan, and so they have to be refreshed periodically. The CTE mobile maker labs would put a mobile maker lab at any school that does not have incubator or mobile maker lab already for the high schools. And then, the second broadband network node was a really important one. Currently, we only have one. And as you saw last January, when all of the kids were doing their map testing, it went out. And then they couldn't finish it. And so, we learned that with a second one, that would kick in immediately, so they might see a little bit of a blip. But it would help to keep the function of the day-to-day pretty seamless. And then, second-grade Chromebooks, there's like some changes to teaks where second graders are going to need to be doing typing and things like that. And so, that's why that is included.
Moving on to the last category, ancillary needs. There is a a new forklift for the distribution center, replacement of 20 aging maintenance vans, a plant services facility or renovation of one of the Grandview Hills ancillary buildings into a space for plant services to utilize in the at that Grandview Hills complex. The TBD there for the the ground, the grounds, the Maxicom irrigation system, that is basically a computerized system that allows the the district's grounds, staff to to manage the irrigation systems district-wide. And we do have a number for that. I think that number is around 1.5 million, Jimmy. So, you could put a 1.5 million in where that TBD is. Replacement of 20 aging grounds trucks, and then also replacement of grounds, mowers, utility vehicles, and tractors. This next item is is one that we spent a good bit of time hearing from the ancillary subcommittee and also the the director of facilities. This would be a plant services mechanic shop. The the old bus barn or the old transportation facility across, I don't know, West-South Street, right? I'm going to say West-South or Southwest, yeah, Southwest Street, is a is is a, was the old district transportation facility back in what the 70s, late 70s and 80s. And so, our, the district's, the district's plant services and grounds department uses that as their mechanic shop to work on their white fleet vehicles and their mowers. And as you can imagine, you know, it's a very outdated facility that needs that that needs a a full replacement. And so, that's what that's what that that item is. Energy management, there's LED lighting, canopy lighting for all campuses. Those are the lights that stay on all night, the security lighting at the campuses. And then LED LED parking lot lights for support services and central transportation, along with indoor LED lighting for central transportation. Then, another energy management item is the the Musco Control Link for Canyon Ridge Football, Cedar Park Baseball, Cedar Park Softball Football, Vista Ridge Baseball and Softball, and then Running Brushy Football. And what that system is, is it's a system that allows you to control those, the sports lighting remotely, so that you're not having to have, you know, coaches aren't having to flip breakers and, you know, get into electrical panels. And it also allows district staff to, you know, control that remotely. Or if a game's over several, you know, the game doesn't happen because of weather, you can actually either do it on the computer or call it in to to turn those lights off. And then, next to last item here is a renovating one of the other buildings at the Grandview Hills complex to house a a third smaller transportation facility on that on that south end of the district. And I think that would house up to 50 buses, correct? And then the last item would be a a new science materials center. I think this is an item that's been considered going back to even the 2017 bond. And the fact that the current science materials center has been significantly outgrown for many years. So, that was something that we felt was very important, along with what goes along with that would be a a new professional learning center. And with that, I think that brings us to the kind of the summary slide of of all of those. And so, as you can see, there's just over 218 million in high school recommendations, right at 45 million in middle school recommended projects, almost 210 million in elementary school projects, 3.5 million just over in security projects, just under 31 million in in information technology projects, and 57 million in ancillary projects. And so, what's next?
Now, it's your turn. So, you guys have until February 17th if you decide you would like to do a May bond. And, you know, this is our recommendation to you, but you guys are the ones who actually vote on whatever does go in a bond, whatever does not go on in a bond. And you have the option for a community service in, or survey, we've done our service, but a survey in the next couple of weeks.
And just before we move on to discussion and comments, I did want to recognize, we do have two of our other steering committee members that are present tonight. So, I just wanted to recognize them and appreciate their, all their efforts. We have Celeste and James that were on the steering committee, so.
All right. Can we go ahead and do a round of applause for the people who are here and for the people back home who worked on this? Committee members, thank y'all so, so much for the work, the time, the missed family dinners. We know about those things. But y'all had intense discussions, and we really, really appreciate that. You've definitely done, I mean, we talk about continuous improvement. The information on the process and how y'all arrived here, I understand it so much better than I have in previous presentations from CFACs. Y'all are definitely continuously improving and really have brought back really good things for us to consider. I have a question, though. As far as like your like continuous improvement, what could we do to improve as we, you know, look into the future of what CFAC, what were the things that you liked, and what are the things we can improve on in the future?
So, I guess I'll go first. I think that it's a, I mean, like they said, like, we had a really, like, diverse group of people. We had all areas of the district covered. We had really robust discussions, and I think that was really great. I think we spent roughly 30 hours in about a two-and-a-half-week period, which was a little bit hard. And I, it made me kind of start thinking, like, what, how could this improve? And could it improve, like, if maybe the steering committee tagged along some of the other committees' visits? So, because it's kind of hard sometimes when you have all of these projects presented to you, but you've never seen any of them. And I feel like that if there's maybe a way to try and spread out the commitment a little bit, too.
Yeah. I think Cara makes an excellent point that while we had access to all the resources that we wanted, you know, just looking at these on a on a sheet of paper, it definitely, it makes it a little more difficult to really, really, a lot of times even to know what what questions to ask. So, yeah, thank you for making that point, Cara. I think that's that's one area that this could, you know, maybe, well, I mean, it would be a little bit more interactive at that at that as well, so. well, I mean, it'd be a little bit more interactive at that as well, so.
Yeah, and I hadn't, hadn't actually thought about that, but that's a really good idea, I'm glad you said that. The ability or, you know, the ability to be, you know, a fly on the wall in some of those Subcommittee discussions, I think is definitely something that could improve the process.
Board members, any questions for CFAC?
I do, so first of all, I'll just, thank you so much for all your hard work, I know it was a lot. And I know that this was a daunting task. I appreciate that when you talked at the beginning about how, you know, what you were tasked with. And then, you know, knowing that long-range plan, right, we just, we just rolled out the first part of that with the rezoning and all that other stuff. Knowing that our community spoke about the failed bonds before, and I'm glad you mentioned that as well, is that that sort of put us in a lot of ways behind on things. And so I feel like also what also happened in the timing of which you guys were making these decisions and deciding which to go, you know, we had that storm happen, we had some damages in facilities that now, you know, we as a board, I think, need to think about and talk about the list that y'all made. And like Kara said, you know, these are recommendations, right? And so when we go and to try to make those decisions and how important it is to make sure that we're including all the stuff that's happened since then, right? So I appreciate all of that. I think the number that you came up with, I just had a question about that. When you, when you say that you, you guys did kind of a, the sticky note way of what do you think was palatable? So looking at the bonds that failed before and knowing that that's what our community has come back and told us, we know we don't want you to have the ability to borrow. And so we, I just want to make it clear that when we, when we have a bond pass, it's not money in our pocket, right? It's the ability to borrow to do so. And so I think making sure that the community understands that it's not, we're gonna collect a bunch of money from y'all in the community and we're gonna shove it in our pocket and then we're gonna go build all this stuff and do all these things. It just gives us the ability to do business. And so I think making sure that the community understands that that's, that's an education piece, where I feel like with the Vader and the Ace and things like that, we did a really good job with educating our community about what this means. And so my question to you guys is this, and I know this was a little long-winded, sorry, I have lots of notes here. Is that when you came up with that number, was there any discussion or thought process of what those committee folks thought was palatable, given the fact that some of these other ones failed before?
Yes, a lot, as Kara mentioned, many hours of discussion. And that was kind of, you know, we tried to operate within that lens of, okay, you know, you know, we can make a recommendation all day long. I mean, you know, if money wasn't an object, I'd say, yeah, let's do all this stuff, right? But it is. So, so yes, there were, you know, we discussed it ad nauseam. I mean, we, I mean, we talked about, okay, what do we think? And, you know, we dug into a little bit of kind of, you know, around the November 21 election, you know, what else was going on at that time and just kind of, you know, trying to, I mean, again, because we don't necessarily want to, I mean, what good is it for us to go through all this if we're gonna throw something out there that we don't think has a reasonable chance of passing by the electorate? And I feel like what we've put forward is something that, that the community, with, with education, I mean, Texas Public School Finance is one of the most Byzantine, I mean, you can, yeah, it's tough to figure out, right? So, and you know, and you're, you know, the legislature's made things certain ways and it's just, you know, it's difficult as it is. As I was alluding to earlier, we had to kind of thread that needle, right? And so I do feel like, you know, I guess from this point forward, that, that the district needs to really focus on educating the electorate about, you know, why this, why we're here. You know, why, why is it that, you know, the nature of the bond, I mean, like you said, it's not, you know, oh yeah, hey, Leander ISD just got $600 million, you know, I mean, it's, no, it's the ability to be able to borrow that. And so, so yeah, but yeah, our main, kind of the, you know, the big, big thing in the room was always, okay, is this something that we feel as a committee? Again, you know, I mean, we all had our own 14 individual voices, but ultimately we acted as a committee. And as a committee, is this what we feel that the, that the public would support? And, and, you know, I can, I can speak on behalf of the committee that, you know, that this is what we feel the community would easily support, so.
I had a question. First, I wanted to say thank y'all. I know y'all had some very intense, very long meetings. I like to tell people the good work in the district is at the committees, because y'all are really doing some great work. I wanted, Kara, you made a comment about what we could do better next time with the Subcommittee. And it really kind of hit on where I'm going with this is, I didn't realize the Steering Committee was not touring or looking at some of the facilities around our campus. And the reason why I'm going with this is, those know I'm on the Long Range Planning Committee. I've been on it since January when we first started because of, you know, our community told the board, hey, your bond failed. We want you to use existing facilities. So this committee was put together to utilize space that we have in our district and to save our taxpayers lots of money. So I'm looking at your list and, you know, these are a lot of needs. But one thing in particular that's really kind of flashing out to me, and it's again, you guys, you mentioned, I'm sorry, Matt, right? You mentioned the Subcommittee's did, finished their work in November, correct? About, they came back, they finished it before fall, and then in the wintertime, January, they came back and their work was complete, correct?
Correct.
So during that time, I'm sure y'all know, there was a lot of damage at one of our high schools, Leander High School. I mean, gyms were just demolished, there was water still standing. Not only that, in the 2021 bond that failed, there was a lot of upgrade and improvements to that. So I guess what I'm trying to go at is, I would really like to see how we can get our CFAC recommendations to align with Long Range Plan, but also go after our facilities that need the help the most, like for instance, Leander High School. So I guess what I'm asking a lot is, I'd like to see what the board conversation, if we could have a conversation about Long Range Plan and how CFAC can tie into this. Because the Long Range Plan really, we put together this plan, the rezoning is the first step, but there's multiple steps after this. And some of those steps include repurposing facilities. And I see some items on here, you know, building new facility when we have existing facilities to use. So Board President and Dr. Gearing, I would like for us to have, if possible, a meeting with Long Range Plan, show our cards, so that way we can see how the CFAC recommendations fit into this plan. But also, I think, also, we also, again, we have schools right now who've been, you know, Mother Nature happened. They need our help, we need money to build, to fix. That's kind of what I'm looking at.
And when y'all came up with the suggestion of going to a bond, not November, but immediate, more immediate, can you tell me just what were your thoughts on why, what, what went into that thought process?
Well, I know primarily, and I'll let Clint talk a little bit about maybe some of the logistical issues with getting in and doing these modernization updates and stuff. But primarily, you know, we've just, we've, quite frankly, we haven't had a facilities-related bond in six years. And we've, we've put off. And again, you know, loud and clear, you know, you know, we have facilities, right? Let's, we gotta invest in them, I mean, you know, your house, you invest in your house, you refurbish things, you have to replace things. I mean, these are the core assets of the district. And so, so, you know, we felt that, hey, if we're another, you know, pushing this out another six months, there's some of these that have been pushed out for six years. And, you know, we could find ourselves in a, in a tight situation if there are, you know, additional, you know, major, you know, HVAC systems that go down in August, you know, in an elementary school. I mean, you know, think of the disruption, I mean, forget about the financial cost, but think about the disruption to that school and those students and their, their learning environment. So, but I think Clint, you know, I don't want to, like, I mean, this is your area, but I mean, I guess, you know, it's our understanding as well that putting, you know, that these projects, especially these major projects, they take time. And there's kind of a season for doing it. And, you know, we're not the only, only school district that's undertaking these projects. So, you know, I'll let Clint kind of talk about maybe, if, yeah, if we pushed it back six more months, ultimately what does that do to some of these projects, you know, that are gonna be, you know, more construction-oriented?
Yeah, I think, you know, depending on whether you're talking about the renovation work or new construction, you know, a six-month, a six-month delay in the bonds very often costs you another school year. So not being able to move forward on the elementary projects would, would in most cases, almost every case, instead of, you know, potentially being able to open a school, Elementary 31 in 2025, 26, you're probably pushing that back to 26, 27. And then on the renovation, modernization projects, you know, there's those, the lion's share, and I say, when I say lion's share, almost the entirety, especially on the elementary projects, and depending on how the secondary ones are managed. But the vast majority of that work is done in the, you know, eight to 10 weeks of summer. And so delaying, and again, delaying six months pushes back that, that cycle. And with long lead times, you're very likely, again, instead of being able to complete that for one particular school year, you're pushing it back to another school year. And we're talking about on several of these modernization projects, projects that are already, you know, five-plus years overdue.
I think add to that, sorry. Because like Baghdad and Nomin were looked at initially for the 2017 bond, and they were not added to it because they were kind of on the border. So then they were on the 2021 bond and it didn't pass. And so when you kind of look at that and think about it being another two years before they could get it, that kind of fed into why we thought May was necessary.
There's also the ongoing inflation challenges, right? So there's a, there's a, there's a money component to it too. If these numbers, you know, all these numbers are based on a May election. And I won't jump into Jimmy's expertise, but I think that, you know, if, if you were to decide to consider a November election instead of a May election, the district would have to go back and reprice many, if not all, these projects. And I would imagine that most of them would, there would be a cost increase associated.
And Francesca, let me wrap up Anna's question, because I want to, let me put a bow on that and then we'll go to your, your question. And Gloria, or Chris, actually, you had made this point. So let me pull them all together and say that, all right, so the committee's recommendation is a May bond. And if that's where the board, the board needs to keep its options open for that opportunity, that means that we then have to be able to make that decision by February 17th. So let's work backwards then. Given that we know there was a winter storm, we know there is Leander Master Plan, I don't even know if they're finished yet with that work, but maybe you can get us Phase 1 so we can be thinking about that in discussions. And given the Long Range Plan discussions, because you had mentioned, plug that into Long Range, can we get kind of that comprehensive, like, let's take CFAC's work as our foundation and plug it in with all these pieces so that we have like a finished discussion here? And that would mean, board members, can we meet on February 2nd? So if y'all want to look at your calendars and see if, I know it was already a whole date, so.
I have a question. During that meeting, will the new board members and those not part of the committee get an update on the Long Range Plan? Because our workshop was on 11/15, and I know our new board members really have no idea in context what that plan looks like.
I think that would be, be great if we could.
Awesome. And that works for me.
I mean, I, I feel like in a way, there needs to be that final like long range, because we, Chris and I just went to that one meeting, but it's that final discussion of the next step. So let's pull all the pieces together, because they're all happening at the same time.
It really does. I mean, for the Long Range Plan to truly be what we, you know, the board put together and our community asked us, it really needs to work side by side. And those two have got to talk together, because otherwise the work we did on that Long Range Plan really means nothing. And we're back to square one where we're, you know, don't have a plan, so.
I saw head nods on the 2nd, yeah? Okay. Do you have something about the 2nd?
No.
Okay. Can I, I stopped Francesca, can I get her question and then go to yours?
Sure.
Okay. Sorry, I just want to make sure I, okay, all right, thank you.
I'm curious if in the decision to recommend in May, if y'all discussed the education that would need to go on community-wise and getting any community feedback? And kind of like to what Anna said, cards on the table, one of the issues we, or a couple of the issues we had with the 2021 bond was the immense amounts of misinformation going around and sort of a lack of full communication, which has been discussed a couple of times about that particular bond issue. You know, as far as this one is concerned, I mean, it's been out not for a terribly long time, and I'm already seeing that misinformation start to go around already about what's happening, what we need and why we need it. So do you feel that this, what went into the thought about, do we have enough time to get community feedback? Do we have enough time to educate the community on the work you've done and why it's so vital to this particular timeline?
We did talk about that. And we talked with the communications executive from the district about it too, about what a communications plan could look like. And we felt like it is enough time, it's, I mean, is it ever going to be enough time? Probably not. But we, I, our understanding too was that with a November bond, you'd have to start the CFAC process over again. And so you'd still have that same communication timeline then.
And also in discussions with the communications folks, I mean, we felt like they could leverage the experience from this past November. You know, so it's not, it wouldn't necessarily be starting with a new, I mean, it's somewhat different topic, but not a different playbook, so to speak. So we felt like, you know, they, they did a wonderful job with, with the communications for the November election. They could leverage and learn from their experiences there and be able to kind of deploy that with respect to this, this bond recommendation.
Dr. Gearing, is there a maintenance budget?
Yes, sir.
Does any of the maintenance budget start to address any of these issues like they're asking for in this bond?
No, sir. So the maintenance budget operates on an annual basis out of the MNO budget. And those items are for the ongoing small issues that we have year in, year out. But there's not enough money in any of those maintenance budgets to deal with these major renovation projects.
Well, as a board, to be more fiscally responsible and to be more transparent with the community, which I think that's why some people are questioning why a big bond like this in May could be coming, because, you know, some of the issues are looking at paint. Elementary school number 30, $14 million road, does elementary school 30 have a road?
So that.
So we built it without a road?
So there, there's a, like, there's a thing with the city where the city will then buy back the public roads. So a lot of that will be reimbursed from the city as soon as they start using those roads.
So if we do this bond though, who pays for the interest? The city will pay for the interest?
So if I can interrupt for one second, Paul would be happy to sit down with you. These are complicated issues that require some background information that I don't think is appropriate in this meeting. But we'd be happy to sit down with you and talk you through exactly, you know, why these proposals have taken place. The Steering Committee and the Subcommittee's have had extensive discussions with our staff to make sure that they understand that we realize that you don't have that background. We're more than happy to sit down with you and make sure that you're caught up by the time we get to that February 2nd meeting.
Well, we're 2.639 billion in debt, and add another half a billion dollars is a lot of money. And yes, it gives us the ability to do business. And I'm questioning how come we haven't been doing business where we're saving for light bulbs? I know lots of teachers complain about not having light bulbs for overhead projectors. So yes, in fact, I'd like to visit every facility that is on this bond, every field, every building. I want to look at it. You say paint needs to be done. I have actually seen a couple of them already, and the paint looks pretty good. I don't know what, is there something wrong with that paint, but?
I, I would just like to add, as we've been going through this process, the high school I went to in Utah growing up has been going through a different process where they didn't maintain it, and now they have to tear it down and build a new one. And so it's been interesting to see these processes go side by side, because on the one hand, I can see what happens when you don't maintain your buildings. They don't, they don't stay forever. You have to maintain them.
I understand that, but we live in a dry, arid community, so tuck pointing and roof building, it's a little different than, you know, Utah, where you might have snow at huge accumulations.
Walls are the same no matter where you go.
They are. But paint on the inside of the building, what extra paint or, or maintenance of having these... We need new chairs, because the chairs are going to fall apart. That, I questioned what this board has done before, and that's why, you know, some of us were newly elected, because we have questions in the community. What have we been doing with the money? We have a $400 million budget every year, 400 million. That's a lot. It's a staggering amount. It's almost what they're asking for in the bond.
So, so I'll point out that of that operating budget, about 85% of that is in our people resource. We're a very human-capacity intense organization. The second biggest part of that is actually utilities. And then come all of these other things. Again, I don't think this is appropriate venue for us to have this conversation.
Bruce, this is an open meeting. This is when we should be talking about it. We are going to make a payment of $120 million on August 15th.
Paul, I would love to sit down with you and help you understand school finance, because MNO and INS are two different things. And you are more than welcome to look at the budget with me and show me where we, where we could pick and choose. But when you fully, truly understand school finance, there's no money here. And it's not because we're being unfinancially, fiscally irresponsible, or whatever narrative you want to do. It's all out there. You want to go look at the bond status report? It's there. But I would be more than happy to sit down and help you understand school finance.
Board members, let's try not to do cross-talking over each other. I appreciate passion on this issue. I, I do think we want to stay on the agenda topic, and that's why Dr. Gearing's saying that this is a good discussion to follow up with him, because wanting to get into like the finances, relationship with the city, the contract, those are not posted agenda items, so we have to stay on our agenda item.
Well, I'm looking at an agenda item where we're talking about a bond that wants $14 million for a road. We probably shouldn't have started building it until we had the money to do it.
Again, that one is, again, if you'll follow up with staff on what the, what have been the agreements with the city, get that information from them, and then whatever is on the posted agenda, we can take at our level, at board level. At our board level, posted agenda item. But I, I would recommend, maybe we do schedule a meeting where we put that on the agenda, and our CFO is here, so when people want to ask questions that they obviously don't know anything about, someone can educate them right here in front of everyone. So when someone wants to make ridiculous claims, I want them to make those claims to our CFO on the dais so that those claims, so we can have that discussion transparently in front of the entire population. So you want to have a conversation about MNO and INS, let's hear what you got to say about MNO and INS and ask those questions to our CFO. Paul, because right here, this is our community who spends a lot of hours doing this work, and this is what's being presented. So asking our community and our committee members about our budget, next time our CFO is up here, that would be a great time to ask those questions. I would like that agenda item. Wait, wait, let me, let me see. I, I've, I've heard a request to discuss MNO and INS to get some more details. I've heard a second, maybe a third. Do we want to have this discussion at the February 2nd meeting? Does that?
Along with the rest of this that we're trying to discuss? Absolutely. I think that would be very prudent.
And then we can have some of those discussions that, that, some of the discussions that you want.
I also recommend that people can do some pre-work by watching the Colored Sand video that Elaine did January 16th last year, and I can send a link to it through Cindy.
And Paul, if you, if you get with Dr. Gearing, and y'all can answer some questions, and then make sure he understands some of the questions you also would like to see that we can have on the agenda, so that we're all kind of clear of like what that will be. So we can all be prepared to have that discussion.
I would, I do, because one of the things they said is, you know, what kind of bond is passable? My first question is, why are they thinking in that way instead of what do we need that is passable? Because the community members that elected me, that's why they elected me. Not about what we can pass, what we can make people understand, but get it by them, but actually, what do we need to pass? There's a difference between what we want and what we need.
So to be clear, I think the CFAC committee had a lot more need than what they're presenting to the board tonight. The need is way greater than the number that they're bringing to the board tonight, so I think it's almost the reverse of what you're commenting on.
We can also send the link to the CFAC, the last CFAC meeting, and so make sure that everybody watches that as well, because that has a long list.
And all that information's online, and I know we've gotten board memos as well, because the list was a lot bigger than this 600 million. I mean, when you want to talk about needs in the district, they're there.
I know they're there. And we have needs. We have needs.
One thing I would add, too, is that within our steering committee, like, when we're talking about diversity of location, we also had diversity of, like, how much people thought we should spend, or what they thought we should spend it on. It covered the broad spectrum of the community.
And, and we also heard that, you know, in, in one of the first meetings, that looking out over the next 10 years, there's somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 billion in, in needs. And so in looking at what, what we thought was, 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 was needed, and also palpable to, to the, to the community was, you know, look, what's, what's the right amount of needed items that need, that we need to recommend, but also not overburdening future committees, because if we go, if we tried to be squeezed too tightly on this bond, those additional $2.5, $3 billion in needs are going to have to be, you know, addressed by, by future committees. So we were trying to find that right balance between the right amount and not going too big, but also identifying those, those high-need items that needed to be done sooner rather than later, and not overburden future committees that would then have to put those into future bonds.
I think this also is where that long-range plan comes into effect, right? Because when we had that workshop on 11/15, it showed we saved taxpayers $600 million. And so this is where those needs come out. There's a workshop done, explained just kind of high-level what the long-range plan, and it does show it. It's, and I, I believe y'all got kind of a calendar, what it says, 2024, 2025, what a potential bond would look like. So the needs have been, the committee's done the work, the needs are there. But now this is where this committee's work and long-range plan need to come together, because that's where you're going to see the savings. That's where you're going to see our needs. That's where you're going to see that's going to get us ultimately where we need to be at and provide stability for our community and families.
I do want to clarify one thing. The city is not reimbursing the roads, it's the developer. I don't want the city getting calls tomorrow about them. They are not reimbursing, it's the developers that, when they build their subdivision or development, they've got to pay to use the roads, and then they'll become public streets. So just want to clarify.
And Jimmy, really quickly, just to loop back on that, and remind me that that is the process at which, when we build a school, this is just, this is how it's done?
Well, typically, what we like to do is buy a platted lot with roads around the site and utilities. We're buying raw land, and we're ahead of the development, so we have to get roads around the school, and that's part of it. And of course, this school was out of project savings, so there was no bond set aside for building the school and the roads. It was, you know, the board has done a great job saving the money, and so it's been financing to build this school with those savings, and now that's the last piece, is the roads, to get the roads. And but we're also trying to build in a safeguard where developers have to pay half the cost of those roads, so.
Committee, again, thank y'all so much for the time and the work. For our new board members, I will tell you, this, this is kind of where board work is at, is that we empower our community to get together, to go through and vet all this information and bring something to us. And now we have to take it to the next step. Thank y'all for all of your work. We really appreciate it.
Can I, can I just clarify one last thing before we go about costs? So this is really a Jimmy question, because Jimmy and his team provided the, the cost estimates for all of this work. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because we're in a very difficult cost environment right now. It's difficult to predict where this is going, and we've seen, you know, where other districts are getting into positions where they, they put bonds out there, but then don't have enough money to actually build what they said that we're going to build. So can you just explain the process and, and how you came to these costs and give the board some assurance that, yes, these numbers that we're bringing to the table are large, but that's for a reason?
Yes. What, the modernization projects, which are a lot of big-ticket items, what we do is we have an engineer provide his cost estimate of what they anticipate the cost to be for that project. Then we had a construction firm develop the cost also, and they're almost hand in hand. They're very close to each other, so you have some confidence, and you can see with construction costs what, what's going on. And so we, and as far as new schools, we're building schools, so we know, and we're bidding right now Elementary 30, so we have good ideas. We just built 20, North Elementary, and so we have those cost records. And that's what drives our new facility costs. But for the modernization projects, because they're very, you're touching buildings, you know, they're 25, 20 years old, and so you've got to anticipate you're going to find some ufos when you get in there and start designing. And, you know, we don't have designs on these projects. They're concept. We have understanding what needs to be done, and so we break it down by different divisions and come up with cost estimates per square foot and break it down that way, and that's how we develop our cost. And so it's, it's not, you know, design documents. And so we have to have small contingencies built in, because you will find something when you get in there. And so what we don't want to do is end up having something come up and we can't do it. And we, we need to deliver the project, and so we try very hard to be close.
You've also built inflational costs into these estimates, so that as you look at timing of implementation of these projects, and several of the, for instance, when you look at the high school modernization projects, those actually run over several years because of the, of how big those high schools are. And so all of that is built even internally into those modernization costs.
We look at a schedule of construction, when we're actually going to be bidding it, to make sure we have inflation to those points and when we can lock in prices. But like Dr. Gearing mentioned, when you have projects that might go three summers or three years, you've got to build in those costs. Contractors will not lock in prices for three years. They just won't. It's hard to get them past 60 days. And so we've got to get, you know, make sure we have the cost covered.
Thank you for that, and I, I'd hope that we're being a little aggressive on those numbers, too. I've heard a lot of school board members right now talk about bonds that passed a year, two years ago, and they passed to build two schools, and now they're at a point, because of what it was bid at and because of inflation, where they can no longer build those two schools with that bond. And so they're at this point of, like, you pass this bond to this community based on these two schools, but you only have enough money there for one of those now. And so I'm, I'm glad that we're thinking about that inflation part, and I'd rather, on the other side, hey, it didn't cost that amount, and then we have this left, than be put in the other situation of not, of passing the bond and then not having enough there to actually do what we, you know, what we told our community we were going to do.
And the way we sell the bonds, we sell them on a cash flow basis. You know, just because you have a project that might have 75 million, you don't sell it day one. You sell what you need for the next 12 months. And so if you end up only spending 70 million, your 5 million is still unauthorized. You haven't borrowed it. So that's the good thing, the way we do it ourselves.
So just to wrap up, I just want to say another thank you. We had almost 150 members of our community who spent a lot of hours doing an extensive amount of work on these projects. And the steering committee, I know, spent a very intense amount of time in a very short time. So thank you for your, thank you for your leadership in the community, for volunteering all of that time and effort, and especially our subcommittee members who are not here, but they spent a lot of time in the fall doing this as well. So thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Alright, as we're concluding this agenda item, Paul, you're going to get with Dr. Gearing on the items. And then once y'all start kind of figuring out whatever items can be addressed, and then what's left, let's get that towards an agenda. Board members, if you have not looked at the CFAC webpage, it's Citizen Facility Advisory Committee. It is an extensive page. It has agendas listed up. It has a link to the steering committee discussions with the larger list of what was going. It really gives us some insight into our community volunteers and the time they spent and worked on this project. Also, if you haven't seen, as Shaday mentioned, the sand finance discussion, please let Cindy know, and she can get you a link for that. And then administration, if you could think about whatever you think the board needs in preparation for that February 2nd meeting in regards to the long-range plan, any reading they need to do or information they need to be ready for. And then the LHS master plan, I don't know if a Phase 1 is completed, but if you have some general idea and could get that to the board, too, in time for our February 2nd discussion, that would be tremendously helpful. So we'll be talking about weather, the master plan, the long-range plan, all looking at, you know, kind of what CFAC presented to us as a foundation. And then we'll also have a side item, a discussion of finance, MNO, INS. And that'll be on February 2nd. Board members, please keep your calendar cleared also for possibly February 16th. Since I see both of those meetings, I'm just going to put them on a radar now, because I don't know how much will get done in February 2nd, given that our committee told us that they would, they're recommending a May. We need to be able to have due diligence so we can have those discussions by that deadline, so. Alright. Alright, we'll go ahead and wrap up that agenda item. A little off-schedule, but good deliberation, good discussion, and we're moving on to the next item, Operation C2. Consider approval of a resolution providing for the defeasance of currently outstanding district obligations. So if you want to see what happens to bonds in the next phase, we have a rousing discussion. Thank you so much for your patience as we were getting to this item.
Good evening, members of the board. Madam President, Dr. Gearing. Tonight, we have with us, uh, Blake Roberts with PFM. He is our district's FA, our financial advisor. As you know, and I'm not going to try to steal any of his thunder, but, you know, the district has been, for the last five, six, seven years, really working toward restructuring their debt. And we are definitely on, on target and on track. But this is an opportunity we have that we had planned to defees some of our, our bonded debt, our cabs. And I'm going to let Blake kind of walk you through it, and he's got about four or five slide presentation to, then we'll obviously be open to answering any questions afterwards.
Thank you, Pete. Good evening, board and Superintendent Gearing. Blake Roberts of PFM, based here in Austin. Good to be with you this evening. I will be brief. This is a fairly straightforward action item. As, as Pete mentioned, this is consistent with district prior action to defees, which is financial jargon for prepay some of your bonds. So you adopted a 33% INS tax rate. As part of the budget and the tax rate, there was 27 million in restricted INS monies that must be used towards the prepayment of debt service this fiscal year. So this action item is a, is, is the approval of a resolution that simply specifies the maturities in the bonds that we will defees or prepay.
Blake, if I can interrupt you, board members, of course, we love brief discussions from time to time. We have two new board members, though, and there is a lot of material, so please do not fail to make it streamlined where we're shortcutting something. Please feel free to give the information you need to.
Sure. So, it is part of the INS fund budget, which is comprised of property tax money that may only be used towards debt service. It can't be used for MNO or other purposes. So, this defeasance or prepayment of debt will be used to prepay some Series 2014D capital appreciation bonds. The district's history with cabs is well documented. It has been a complete paradigm shift and transformation over the last decade as the district has aggressively tackled its exposure to cabs, reduced its cab debt, and received upgrades from the rating agencies for those efforts. So, once we prepay those bonds, the next few weeks, the bonds are removed from the district's books. About 32 million, 30.5 million of future debt service that goes away. So, it reduces your debt service immediately. And again, I will remind the board of the goal of reducing cab debt service to 25% by 2025. This advances that goal. It also dovetails nicely with the conversation because it is also supportive of future bond capacity. So, we are reducing debt and debt service in an area where you may need to put in new debt service for a new bond. This is hard to read. It is an overview and a listing of every bond the district has outstanding. This is also available on the district's website. About 1.1 billion in outstanding principal. Total future debt service, about 2.5 billion over a 30-year period. That's the stated debt service. That assumes no refundings or prepayments. So, that number would come down as we refinance and prepay bonds.
I'm sorry, can you restate that again? Our total debt service is what right now?
2.5 billion or so over a 30-year period if we did nothing in terms of future refundings of bonds or prepayment of bonds. So, that-
Includes principal and interest.
Includes principal and interest over that period of time.
And so, how would I explain that to the community? You're looking at two numbers. Is it 2.5 or 1.1 or 1.2? How would you help explain that to our community?
So, it's, think about it like a mortgage. The first number is the face value of your mortgage. The second number is if you don't prepay that mortgage at all, which you would pay on the assets over a 30-year period.
And do we normally repay the amounts down?
Right, right. So, like a mortgage, you typically refinance that mortgage when you have lower rates, make extra payments. So, the stated, the stated value or the stated cost typically comes down between now and year 30.
Do you have a number based on how the defeasance have been happening in recent times? And like, for example, we're talking about 27 or 30 million today. So, if you apply that annually over the next, say, 30 years, what would that total payment look like?
That's a good question. It's a great math question. I'm not going to try to answer on the spot, but it would be very helpful and significant in reducing that cost. And what I would say, this is comprised of capital appreciation bond debt that is heavy in Series 2014 and Series 2015. If the interest rate environment cooperates, we will be bringing forward two significant bond refundings in '14 and '15 that will reduce those costs significantly. So, I want to stress that by about 2015 was when you hit that threshold and the district said that the cab trajectory is no longer sustainable. And so, we are, we are close to that point where there are two big bonds that were very expensive that we will be refinancing and paying off and a combination of refinancing and/or paying off in the next few years.
I mean, the only reason why I asked that question was really because when you said the 2.5 million is if you do nothing, and we know we're not doing nothing, so it doesn't seem really realistic. And even looking back, where there was like 3.4 billion about 10 years ago, and now it's gone down by a billion in a decade. I mean, that's huge.
It's a great point, and there is a document on the website that sort of walks through the history of the cab debt and that cost reduction that I would remind the public of. Lastly, in this box, this is from Fitch, which is a rating agency. They assess the creditworthiness of school districts. And they commented that in their upgrade, which was an improvement in your rating, you can read what they said, but reflects the significant decline in the district's long-term liability, combined with Fitch's view that there has been market improvement in the debt management practices. So, just wanted to make that clear, that you have gotten commendations from third parties on the board's directive towards debt. So, this is a slide, same from last year, where we are focused on, as I just mentioned, these 2014 and 2015 bonds that were cab-laden and are very significant sort of interest rate and debt costs of the district that we will pay off a portion of with this defeasance and refinance or refund in the next few years. So, this is nothing more to show you that these are the bonds that we're targeting for payoff and refinancing the next few years. And again, this defeasance will do three things. It will eliminate future cab debt service. It will advance your goal of reducing cab debt service by 2025, and it will assist with bond capacity. So, I will try to navigate your eyes on this chart. We are going to get rid of about 30.5 million in future debt service focused in years 2026 through 2028, which is where we will probably need some capacity for new debt that comes online if a bond election is passed. So, that's a net savings of about 3.5 million after the 27 million in contribution. We do move the needle. You reduce your cab debt service to 29%. We have, we have done the math to demonstrate that with future defeasances and refundings and new bond issuance, you would hit your goal of 25% by 2025. The last thing is the chart. The blue vertical bars represent annual debt service obligations this year through maturity. And then, the black line represents what that looks like after this defeasance. So, you can see in those three years in '25 or '26, '27, and '28, where the black line does not match the blue line, that's where we're reducing your obligations in those years. Those are my formal remarks. It's a pretty simple process. There's not much cost associated with it. We will deposit money into an escrow account in the next few weeks. Once that happens, the bonds are paid off and they're off your books. So, with that, happy to answer any questions about the process or the thought in this.
Board members, I know what you're thinking, but you've heard about the whole PSF guarantee and what's happening with that. And I did reach out earlier on, actually, it was, I think, over break, and I said, "Don't check your emails while I'm break." So, lesson to myself is don't send stuff on break because he will answer. But I understand the response is all the district bonds have a PSF guarantee except for Series 2015B and 2013B? And those are not guaranteed to PSF, but all the others do have the PSF backing currently?
That's correct. And so, this PSF issue, it's a great topic to explore. It really means that, for you, no impact now because we're not in the bond market. For districts that issued bonds in the last few months, they weren't able to get the AAA PSF guarantee, meaning that you paid higher interest costs for that. The good news, again, for Leander ISD, let's assume we're in the bond market in the next few months and couldn't access PSF. Your bond rating is AA. That's only two notches away from AAA. So, there would be a cost to the district, but it wouldn't be as significant as for other districts that don't have as high of a bond rating as you all. So, the PSF question, directly answer your question, yes, there are two series of bonds that don't have PSF for various reasons, but all of your other bonds do, and so, it is not an issue for you at the moment with respect to new bonds.
And those aren't, though, in the ones that we're defeating, right?
Correct, correct.
Board members, any question?
I do. So, the, so, based on our expectation of being able to, what was it, 30%?
You're at 30% now. It would move it down to about 29% after we pay off some cabs.
Right, but then, so not only are we ahead on the percentage, but we're ahead on time. Is that right? Is that I'm hearing it correctly?
I think we're good on time. We have, we have, we have two years to get there, and we have significant cab bonds in '24 and '25 that will be callable. So, it will be a good time to get rid of those and refinance those.
There's so much we could talk about here, but it is 10:30, and so, I am wanting to make sure.
I do have, if any board members have any questions or comments on how to solve our debt or have questions about bonds or defeasance, these are the gentlemen that you, this is where we would want to ask those questions instead of our, our community members. I do have a question. When you talk about our bond rating and because we have this good bond rating, we would be able, you know, this is where we'd be. Can you, very quickly, I know it's late, explain how is it that we have this bond rating? What, you know, how do those bond ratings come to be?
Yeah, great question. It is essentially a credit score for the district. So, if you have a high credit score, you pay a lower interest rate. You have a low credit score, you pay a high interest rate. In this case, a high bond rating is a high credit score. The factors that go into that, one, it's management. It's management, it's the people, it's the policies. You have high marks for management. Two, it is, it is your financials and kind of how you come out from a budget standpoint. Budget surpluses are good, budget deficits not so good. It's how much you have in a rainy day fund, your fund balance. That's key. They want to see typically about 25 to 30% of your budgeted spending on hand at all times to keep that good bond rating. The other piece is your local tax base and economy. So, do you have development occurring? Is your tax base growing? That's a good fact. That is true for Leander ISD in a really big way versus a contracting tax base. And then, the fourth thing is liabilities. So, that includes debt. It also includes pensions. And so, again, you have very high marks for management, finances, and economy, and you have really improving marks for debt that, to a point where you received an upgrade a year ago because of your debt improvement.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
And I believe we received an upgrade five years prior to that as well.
That's right. I won't discount that. Yeah, S&amp;P was, was first to the upgrade in 2017 or '18.
So, it's been, it's been a trajectory as we manage better and get, get the cabs off the books that we've been rewarded twice by two credit, third-party credit agencies, so.
And the opportunity to get them off the books come when they're callable? Is that, you talked about the '24 and '25?
So, also a great question. In this case, because the 2024 cabs are not callable until August of 2024, the mechanic of this is we put cash into an escrow account. That escrow account earns interest, which reduces the cost required to defees those bonds. That escrow sits earning interest until 2024 when the bonds are callable. And then, when the call date hits, the escrow pays off the bonds, the bonds go away. So, that's the way we affect the defeasance of non-callable debt because we really want to attack the cabs that have the highest cost, and so, therefore, that's how we do that. Good question.
Just to be clear, callable means that's the moment in time when you can pay it off?
Right.
Okay, just for people that didn't know what callable means. And I do have a question for you, Pete, and this is kind of a lengthy one, so bear with me. The district is facing financial pressure on a number of fronts. Inflation, recapture, state dollars, federal dollars, dropping fund balance, emergency fund, growing student population, large district approaching build-out, that meaning how many people can move to the district. Large recent valuation growth and a large recent tax hike. That's the 99.2 million that came in this year. Teacher pay remains depressed relative to inflation and limited increases since 2015. So, pressure to raise salaries will remain, which LISD fund balances assumptions show the district hitting the legal limit within three years. How do you recommend the district balance all these issues while delivering a quality education to the kids? I know it's a lot, but, you know, we were talking about good questions and-
It is a good question. A couple of things I've, I may have, I didn't have a pencil. I did not bring my pen with me. It's in the book back there, so I tried to, I'll go off memory. If I say something, correct me. But number one, we have a very healthy fund balance. It's about 45, 50%, and not 25 is the minimal. It hasn't been decreasing. Even though we do show at times, you know, a deficit budget we adopt, as the year progresses, based on vacancies, based on monies not being spent, we typically finish the year at a break-even point, give or take. So, we are in a good position there. You have, you know, we've had conversations, actually this morning and yesterday, about staff salaries, particularly teacher salaries, trying to be more competitive. We are off to a good start with having the, passed the Vator. That got us, not having to pay additional 30 million in recapture with no funds to replace that. We've shown some, some graphs. We've looked at the staffing at teacher level. We've looked at auxiliary level. We've looked at bus driver level. We've looked at every, we looked at administrator level. You know, all those indicators are showing that, you know, we're not out of the norm. You could always add more. You could always tighten the belt, but then you get to the point, how do you tighten the belt to where you do not, or you have minimal impact on the education of our students? And that's, I mean, anybody can cut a budget. That's easy. How do you cut a budget and still reach your mission? How do you still make sure that your students are not harmed and they're still getting the education the community deserves and demands? That's, that's the million-dollar question. So, as I came in and being new in my first 90 days, you know, my goal was, A, look for the easy stuff. Look for the anomalies. Well, there really was none there on the staffing side. You know, and the community stepped up and, you know, and passed a Vator. It was a tough, that was, that was a tough election. I mean, we asked a lot, and they did that. So, now, going forward, you have a legislative session. Looks to be, we will get some increase, hopefully some help on the gold pennies. That's our, our taxpayers are already paying. Now, they're going to be at a higher level. So, if, if, if the amount that has been put in House Bill 1 at this point, at $126.21, where it's currently 98.56 on the gold penny, that gets us an additional $11 million next year. And it's either, A, it's $11 million we don't have to pay back to recapture, or it's $11 million that the state funding increases, just depending on where we lie. For us, it's probably going to be $11 million. We won't have to pay back to recapture. That's $11 million more we keep. Local tax dollars we can keep. And it's monies, not only that we can keep, it's monies that we can focus on. What are our areas? Teacher salaries. We want to be competitive. We want to have a system in place that we pay well, but we also have a system in place that promotes longevity, that rewards just staying, staying with LISD. We've got a couple of things on the table that we're looking at that are probably, I'm not going to say too far outside the box, but things that have probably not been done in Leander ISD. And so, we've got some things that'll be in the next month or two. So, how do you balance all that? You know, that's, if I could juggle, I would, I'll show you. That's what it is. There, it's multi variables when we make into, to go into decisions. And so, at this point, it's, you know, each time a position comes open, you know, we reevaluate. I mean, do we need to have that position? Some will be easy yeses, some will be easy no's, very few, and some will be in the middle, where we, where we cross that line. Because the key to the job that we do, or the job that I have, or the job that our district administration has is really is asset allocation, or resource allocation. Our taxpayers, no matter if we're at tier one or tier two, whatever our taxes or revenue comes in, how do we best allocate those resources to accomplish the mission and the vision of the board of trustees in our community? And so, it's a process. I wish I could tell you, it's going to be done on this date, but it's going to be ever-going, but it's something that we all strive for every day in every decision that we make and in the budgets that we develop.
And then, I just wanted to add that, I mean, advocacy, it's advocacy season. Like, it's in high gear right now with the-
Oh, we're going to have legislative updates. Just a second.
Yeah, with the legislature in session.
I have data for that, too.
I mean, a big part of it is also that we're being funded at the same level as we were four years ago by the state.
We can talk about that legislative update. I don't want to get us too far off the agenda item. And so, I want to go back to Paul. You had a multi-layered question. I'm trying to make sure, based on the answer, I loved your answer, by the way.
I loved his answer, too.
Great. Okay, so did that get all your questions asked, or is there anything remaining to defeasance of our currently, current debt obligations?
No, it's a complicated issue, and it'll come up again, but as of right now, I mean-
Okay, so, you're, you're good with questions because we're going to, okay, I just want to make sure. Okay. Thank you all. Thank you- Thank y'all, thank you so much. I really, I cannot thank you for how much work you have done for the district. I mean, seriously, if board members, new board members, if y'all have not seen PFM's write-up on kind of our debt history and how we've really, y'all, with, I get it, board gave a direction, but PFM really helped the board's direction and vision come into reality. And we are on so much better financial footing, we're doing so great. I love what we're doing with our taxpayer dollars because it is being responsible with the funding and it benefits our kids in the classroom and our teachers. So thank y'all, thank, so just know, it helps, thank you.
I appreciate it, and I will say it has been the board and prior boards that have, that have given us that direction, so thank you.
I move that the Board of Trustees adopt a resolution providing for the defeasance and reme, uh, red, sorry, redemption of certain currently outstanding district obligations.
I second. I have motion from Chris, second from Gloria. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. All right, we'll move on to our next agenda item. We're going to go ahead and move down operations and then we'll go back to governance. So Pete, if you just want to stay up there, we'll just, because we won't have you do, unless you want to go get a pen. I don't want you to feel bad about missing your pen. I mean, we, we stranded him up there without all of his supplies. We're going to move into items C, three, operations, consider approval of an external auditor for the 2022, 2023 audit services. And this is external auditor, not our previous discussions.
All right, good evening, members of the board. Long time no see. So if you recall, five of you may recall, two of you being new, about a year, a little over a year ago, we went out to RFQ for an auditing firm, and the decision was made to continue with the same auditing firm. However, we did change partners within that auditing firm. And so this is, we just finished the first year, they audited, Whitley Penn is the company, and they audited the 2122 school year. And so each year, we need to have an engagement letter for them to audit the, the current year we're in. So tonight, we're just bringing you the engagement letter for Whitley Penn to audit the current year, 2223. So as, once this is approved, I think we have five years that we approved with the original RFQ a year ago, and we can do it, renew it five times, I mean, each year for five years. We will return this to them and then they will begin to their audit planning for the upcoming year. They usually come out April, May, and start doing some preliminary work for the first, they look at all the board minutes for the first six months, et cetera, et cetera, and do the work that they can, and then they wrap it up in the end of the summer. So in order for them to begin that process, they need to have an engagement letter and, and know that they're the ones that we're, that we're going to renew with them, and so I'm just bringing that to you tonight for your approval.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve Whitley Penn to be engaged to provide annual audit services for the 2022, 2023 fiscal year.
I second. I have a motion from Anna, second from Christine. Are there any questions, board members? All right, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. We'll move on to the next agenda item, business and finance monthly reports. Is there anything you want to draw our attention to in item A, B, C, D, or E?
The only one, I just, just let you know, it's one that we only give it during January through June, and that is the, the budget projections. That's, that's one, it's just, this is the first time you're getting it, it's January. So just FYI, it's in there, and it will be in there through the month of June. It just kind of gives you an update, takes the, the budget information that we have, actual expenditures, and then we extrapolate that out, forecast it for the rest of the, of the year, and it's, it'll be updated each month. So it's not a hard stone figure in that thing. It's just, as of December 31st, this is where we, it looks like we're going to be. In January, we updated, February, we updated, March, we updated. But just to kind of give you an idea of where we think the end of the year is going to, going to fall, where it's going to add to fund balance or, or take from fund balance is where we're going to end up, so. Just, that's the one that's, that's not normally in there, but it's only in there from January through June. So just be aware it's in there, but other than that, all the other reports are your regular month reports and the investment report that are standard.
I just have a comment for our community because we had a discussion on bonds. Like Pete said, if you look at 8C4B, it's monthly bond status report, and it gives you an update about where our bonds, our previous bonds, and what the work's been done, and where the status of them are at. So if there's any clarification or questions, you can always check that out.
All right, if there are no questions, we're going to go ahead and close this agenda item. We're going to move up, back up to the top, 8B2, board member committee updates. We have two board member committee updates, legislative update, and if Pete wants us to stay up there because it's going to be a short update from, from this chair's perspective. I, I'd like to thank Gloria and Anna for just diving in. Legislative committee has a lot of meetings, and they're not going to stop. But I, I appreciate just y'all's attention and really just staying focused on this. We have some things that are coming up that I want to make sure the board is aware of, and I also want to just kind of give you big highlight of items that we've kind of talked about. One is, as you know, 88th legislative session is going. There is a substantial surplus and lots of thoughts have come out about how that could be spent. There's also a substantial amount of bill filing. It's ahead of schedule compared to where it was last session. So there's a lot of ideas on how to govern. Multiple public education topics have come out and been filed. And what we're seeing too is that some of these, as far as board members, we may see like noise and it starts to cancel each other out. So you have these two great things that you really wanted, but now it's like, oh wait, if we go for this item, then you can't ask for this item, or you, you ruin your message. So as trustees, I'd like to draw your attention to our legislative priorities, and if you know them already, that's fine, I'm sure the ledge committee probably has them in their head because you've been looking at them so much. But we're coming up on an issue. We did approve these priorities, but if you notice, we talk about kind of some of the main things that we want to do as a board. Those main things, those main things include target priority of increased funding for hiring staff. Then you look down in there and we have something talking about attendance versus enrollment discussions. But board members, we've also talked about increasing the basic allotment. And if you notice, we don't really have that specific wording on our priorities right now. And so here's the discussion. If lawmakers are going to say, we'll do one or the other, and, you know, we'll either address enrollment or we're going to increase basic allotment, but both probably won't happen, then as board members, when we're up there at the Capitol, where do we kind of want to focus? And so on the legislative call today, Pete said he would go back and they would do some numbers and tell us really what happens with enrollment-based funding, where does that really land the district financially versus an increase in basic allotment? And to give you a touch more context, if the legislation looks at enrollment-based funding, the chances of them really looking at 100% enrollment-based funding is not high. They're probably going to do some type of cap and some type of amount. Basic allotment, the different funding amounts out there, as I think we saw there was some discussion, some are advocating for $900 increase in basic allotment. I don't know, we'll see how that goes. So with that kind of guidelines, Pete, would you let us know kind of your findings?
Yes, again, thank you, Madam President. So there will be numerous discussions when it comes to school funding. And so, but right now, the two that have kind of taken, gotten the most traction as, as our board president mentioned, is you have enrollment and then you have increasing the basic allotment. I think seven states in the United States, we're one of seven, that, that does on average daily attendance and doesn't do it on enrollment. So enrollment, you know, if you go back a couple of years ago before the pandemic, before COVID, you know, we were 95 and a half, 96% attendance, and probably a lot of districts around us were in the same boat. Right now, we're doing really good to hit 94%. I mean, it's just, call it, what do you, post-COVID blues, I don't, whatever you want to call it, it's just, it's, things have changed, parents are able to, you know, work from home a little bit more, and there's a, a myriad of factors that are affecting that, but we're not at 96% anymore. So that's about, from going from 96% to 94%, it's about 3 million per percent, so it's $6 million reduction in funding. Yet we have to staff as if every student was there every day. And so looking at that, so if we were to go to enrollment funding, which is all of our students would be enrolled, it's an additional about 2,500 students is equivalent to what it would boil out to be. And it would get us about 16, 16 and a half million dollars more, more in funding, going from where we're at now, 94, all the way up to, up to being 100. And as mentioned earlier, I'm not going to hold my breath for 100% enrollment funding. They may take a factor of it, they may take an average of it, but I'm not going to say we're going to get 100. But the other side of the coin is, okay, so what is, what does basic allotment do for us if they increase it? How does that affect Leander ISD? So in, in simple terms, using even numbers, you know, we have about 50,000 WADA, so for every $100 increase in the basic allotment, that means we would earn our, in our instance, keep, not have to get back to recapture, about $5 million for every $100 increase in the basic allotment. So if there's ever anybody out there listening to this that says, I'm never going to, sitting in algebra class and saying, I'm never going to use this again, this is the moment. When you do a break, you, you do your break even analysis, okay? This is it, so you calculate it out, basically, you know, what is, what does, what, what point do these two numbers where they match? And so basically, a $328 increase in the basic allotment would equal about 16 and a half million or paying us 100% on enrollment. But we all know we're probably not ever going to get 100% enrollment. So what, typically what I do is just, for every $100 increase, it's $5 million is what we get. And so if you, whenever you're in a conversation, if someone's saying 900, then you just say, okay, nine times five, okay, that's, that's $45 million. I mean, it's, it's kind of easy for you to figure it out, you just on the per hundred basis. You know, the gold penny has already gone up basically in House Bill 1. Now granted, it could change tomorrow, but I mean, what's, based on the current law, how that value is determined, and the 96th, you know, wealth factor, it would be $126.21. That's an additional $11 million for Leander at, for next school year, and it's an additional million more after that, the year after. That isn't affected by enrollment or, or whether it's paid on enrollment or we're paid on basic allotment, that would be additional funding because of the five gold pennies that the board has approved and the three that we, that our community allowed us to access because of the six of the Vator. I don't know what, at this point, I mean, typically the copper penny is half of the gold, but they have not put that in House Bill 1, so I didn't really calculate that out. That would give us a couple more million, but it's, that's kind of really what we're looking at. So all said, just think a $100 increase on the basic allotment gets us $5 million, and then if we were funded fully on enrollment, going from 94 up to 100%, would be 16 and a half million, so.
All right, question, board members? Nothing to change in priorities, nothing to do other than to continue to noodle on this. We might have to have more discussions as things move forward. Legislative committee might want to ask y'all, as we're talking to lawmakers, where do you want us to hit? It's the primary things and focus. And that also brings up two dates that are coming up. The PTA rally date will be on February 27th. Board members, if you are free, please put that on your calendar. There'll be parents and students up at the Capitol, and then board members are welcome to go support our PTA rally. We also have the trustee legislative day, that's for all the Texas trustees, on February 21st, so that's six days before. All good opportunities to advocate up at the legislature, and we may end up just chatting with y'all to make sure that we're all on point. The only thing we can be advocating for as trustees is what we have on our sheet, but we might need to talk about the priority of what are going to be the top three things when we're in the offices. Okay, any questions? I'm going to wrap this up. All right, thank you.
Those, those numbers, specific numbers, can we get that in the Friday memo? Just so they're right in front of me because I didn't write them down.
You can't remember those?
Yeah, sorry.
More than happy, more than...
I want to make sure I'm accurate as I'm talking to legislators.
I got you. See, if you had a pen, you could just write, no, kidding. More than happy to, more than happy to.
Funny. All right, we are wrapping down our open agenda items here. We've got the last one for the evening, governance, board operating procedures update, and I will let Anna take it away as board chair.
Did everyone have a chance to look over board operating procedures? Because we didn't get any remarks or anything. If y'all look it over, there was four items that we clarified, changed. Y'all, y'all, can y'all see them? Do you need me to read all four? Are you good? Just also so y'all know, like I had said, during this process, I found a lot of things that were very repetitive, but also, like, how do we ensure that board operating procedures are being aligned with policy? So I'll be forwarding to, who's the policy chair, Gloria? Forwarding you what is kind of aligned, what needs, what is in here? And then also, just so y'all know, if y'all have any other suggestions to add to board operating procedures, make it the best board operating procedures ever, let me know because I'm going to be working with Trish on cleaning this up. So it is an efficient board operating procedures that match policy and work great for our board. I don't, unless y'all have any other questions?
Yay, more meetings for us. Okay, if there are no questions, then I need a motion.
I still would like to revisit in that board operating procedures where we give the people three minutes to speak. I know we talked about that briefly the last time, but I'd still like to put that out there because I think the people needed a minute and a half, you, you barely get to formulate a thought. I mean, there's a, there's a couple of things that I think people, it's hard to get a minute and a half what you really need to say. I know tonight, there was lots about water polo. But just saying that out there, it's important that, if we really want to have transparency with the community, if you really want to build trust, you need to give them an olive branch.
Oh, I absolutely agree with that, but it is also on board members to get out and talk to the community. So there's board cafes, there's also, you can have office hours on your own. There's many opportunities, but when we're in that citizens' comment, we can't have a back and forth. I've been up there as well, and I'm frustrated because I can't get a response from them. So it is actually on you, you, me, her, her, and her, to get out there and listen to our community. I, I'm just, but I will take your consideration, like you said. I didn't get an email or any other concerns, but I will take it into consideration, but this is not going to be back up for a vote for a while, just so you know.
That's okay. And you had talked about before, sent something, and I, and I appreciate that, I just, I like talking in an open forum, you know, and speaking of community members, one of the things I talked about again was when I was at Vista Ridge, is bringing back a dress code for the kids. The kids are dressing like the beach.
I understand that, but we're not talking about dress code, we're talking about board operating procedures, okay? That's, that's not in here at all.
Let's not talk over each other, I'm seeing a lot of mics go up, so just a second.
I just, right now for board operating procedures, we had the discussion, right? We had two weeks to give Cindy all of the information to me. I didn't get anything from anybody, nobody. Everyone had every opportunity, you could have gone in here and redlined anything you wanted, and I promise you, I would have looked it over and I would have sat down with you and talked it over, because I've been working on these board operating procedures since I got on the board. But like I said, right now, this is what we've got approved, I will take your considerations in, but I'm not, we're not, it's not coming back up for a vote for a while until this gets clean, but policy needs to meet first. This is what we're waiting for, and so...
I just, you know, you, you brought up what, what the community wants to talk about, well, that's one of the things the community wants to talk about. They want to bring back up the dress code.
Okay, well, that's not the time right now.
Policy, just to let you know, as you mentioned, that policy did set three meetings over, I think, the next 30 days. We set up three meetings for two hours each, and so we have all of those meetings set up. Paul, I'm sure you're familiar with all of, you know, how agendas are set, but if there's something that you'd like to add on the, we can't deliberate up here about something...
I understand, we just, that was just a wonderful segue of like what people want to talk about, so...
Okay, so you can't, at this, and on a, on, when you're on the school board, I can't just say, hey, I was talking to some people and they think we should talk about this. What I can do is say, I would like to add an item to the agenda, and then if I get a second, then we can move sort of things to put that on the agenda. But we, we need to make sure that we follow our rules, and so we have to follow what's on the agenda and can't talk about, you know, I would have loved to talk about the water polo issue tonight, but it's not on the agenda, so we can't talk about that.
Sure, and that's where I'd like to put that on the agenda for the next meeting or somewhere out to talk about the dress code again, just revisit that.
Okay, so dress code will be coming up, it comes up when we do our student handbook regularly. Is there... Is there a, we have a request, is there a second to have it up quicker than that? All right. Be thinking about it. If there ends up being two, or Paul, somebody approaches you and gets a second, then you just email me and say, hey, I've got two. And then you reach out and let me know. I was asking for a motion, and it turns out, I thought this was, this was going to be for motion tonight, it's actually not. We're just going to put, I know, we're going to just put it on consent, though, so it'll be on the consent agenda. Okay. All right. So without further ado, this now moves us, it is eleven o'clock, we are moving into closed session. For purposes permitted by Texas Government Code 551.071, consultation with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation and our attorney-client privileged matter, Texas Government Code 551.074, personnel deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassign, reassignment duties of a public officer or employee. I know I was going too fast, I need to slow down, I'm sorry. Texas Government Code 551.0821, deliberation regarding matters whereby personally identifiable information regarding one or more students will be disclosed, and Texas Government Code 551.089, discussion of district-wide intruder detection audit report findings. There will be no action taken enclosed, we will all come back out to open, to do action will all come back out to open to do action pursuant to closed session and the board meeting
to open to do action pursuant to closed session and the board meeting debrief before we adjourn.
debrief before we adjourn.
It says Laura Lynn here. So yes, you do have the ability to take action on that item. It was properly noticed on your agenda. And in your board letter, it actually had checked on the board letter that this was requested for action this evening. Although the, on the agenda, it says update. That doesn't preclude you from taking action, so long as it's been properly noticed as a, as a subject matter. And update really is just a convention that we use as administration when we're helping to develop that agenda to signal to you as board members, you know, what, what we're typically going to be asking for, whether it's going to be more of a report or whether we're asking for immediate action. And in this case, it was just an oversight that that said update on the agenda.
So board members, it was posted. It did say action actually on the letter when you look at it, so it was just up to board now will on if we want to do a motion to approve tonight, or we can just put it in consent for the next meeting.
I move that the board adopt the board operating procedures as presented, delegating authority to the administration to make any necessary changes to address nonstantive scribe's errors if necessary.
Aye, second.
I have a motion from Gloria, second from Chris. Any other discussions, questions? All right. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes. Any nays? One nay. All right, motion carries. All right. Thank you so much. We'll move on to the next agenda item. I'm still going to ask you how to do board meeting debrief. I hear laptops closing. Action pursuant to closed session. Are there any actions from closed session?
I move that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendations for teacher employment contracts for personnel additions as presented in accordance with the salary scale policies and contracts of Leander Independent School District for the 2022-2023 school year.
Aye, second.
Okay. I have a motion from Francesca, second from Chris. Any other, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. Are there any other motions, or is that it? That was it from closed session? Okay, so board members, before you leave this evening, two action items. Board meeting debrief is there. I actually